प्रारंभ मिन्सु कुंदम रणदरकोडा वक्कन मिश्वम मनु देवनी स्तुतिंदम मरी वातावरण मैनतो प्रतिकोलंगा उठाउन्दे इकम मनु सहोदरलानी कल रावान्सी उम्दिगनिका परी मार्गमच्छुलो नमन सहोदरलान्दर मर्देवड़ी श्यामकरणगण नडिपिंचाली ई प्रचयका कुड़िक मनुके देवनी करणगण उडलानी चप्पी प्राधन चेद्दम हालेलुया 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 एसया नीके स्तोत्रमल तन्री स्तोत्रमल 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 नायना परिष्ठुदुरा नीके स्तोत्रमल नायना स्तोत्रमल स्तोत्रमल तन्री गोप्पदेवुरा नीके महिमा चेलिंचुंडु नमु तन्री हालेलुया जीवादीपति निक्स्तोत्रमल तन्री स्तोत्रमल नायना सैलमा स्रोंगमा दुर्गमा माकेडमा नीके स्तुतुलुनायना स्तोत्रमल तन्री स्तोत्रमल नायना जीवादीपत वयोन्ना वाडा नीके स्तोत्रमल तन्री समस्त मनु चोस्तुन्ना वाडा यहो वशम्मा नीके स्तुतुलुनायना स्तोत्रमल 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 तन्री देवा चूडुनायना यक्का प्रचयका कुड़िक नमरिचोडंडी नायना ओ देवा नायनमर राजाया ओ मासहोदरलु नायनमर राजा प्रयानलो उठुन्नक ई प्रतिकोल वातावरणमलो देवा अंदर निक्षयम करणगणु नडिपिंचवा तन्री नडिपिंचवा नायना एसया नीके स्तोत्रमल तन्री स्तोत्रमल 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 नायना हालेलुया 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 मरी सामयमलो मरावुड़ी निंचोच्छन् मर्देवजनलो जोशप गरु प्रारंभ प्राधन चेवल्संग कोर्तावुन्न अंदर कोडमरी प्राधनलो एकि बवेंचंडी म इधनार्मन मज्जुकोस्तुन्ना सिंडेगर मर्देवड़ी बलपरची परालगे तजमा चास्तुन्न अड्वांटी मर्देवजनलो मर्द जोशी कुमारगण कोडमर्देवड़ी बलपरची परिचक्कगा मनु भाषुल आर्ध्यम चेस्कोडानुकी मर्याकमनु सनिची मरी कुड़िकान्ता मर्देवनी करणगण मर्द जारगलन चप्पी प्राधन चेद्दम अंदरु प्रार्थन यस्कुनाहु देवनी एक्का महाकृपन वटी प्रयवन वटी गता कालमंत मनुलं देवड़ु एन कृपलो कापाडी ई सिक्टम्बर नला आरो तेदी सायिंग काल सामयमलो मरी वनमारा दिस्तुन्ना ई मंद्रमलो व्यामिगरलो मनु देवजनलो पास्त जयरुन कुमारगण एक्का परिचरीलो मरी ई रात्री देवजनलो सिंडेगर वाक्यन चप्पटानुके मनु मज्जुकोच्चारु देवुर तना दासुन बहुबलंगा वाड़ु कुन्नट्लुगा अलगे जोशी गरु ट्रांसलेशन चास्तुन्न अपुडु परिष्ठुदात्मा शक्तिया भिषेकानु कायनकिची मंचिगा ट्रांसलेशन चेटानुके देवुर कृपचुपिंचोड़ट्लुगा ई देवकारिक्रमोलो देवुरु मनु मज्जुलो उड्डिगे ई कार्यलनी सक्रमगा आयन महिमात्वाय जरिगिच्छलाग्रा मनु मंद्र रणिचेत्लेति देवुर स्तोत्राल चेलेद्दम हालेलुया 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 थैंक यू जीसस प्राइस लॉर्ड थैंक यू माय वेल्ली फादर हालेलुया हालेलुया ओ देवा निक्स्तोत्रम स्तोत्रम स्तोत्रम कृपगला देवा दयगल मातन्री मी गनमायन नामानुके वेलादी स्तुतुलु स्तोत्रालो अंदरालो चेलिच्छुटुनाहु तन्री प्रवास सिक्टम्बर नला आरो तेदी साइकल सामयमलो तन्री मी मंद्रो मी मी सर्दारमलो कुड़कोडानुकी मरोकावकाश आर्नी माकु मेरिच्छन्दुकुनायना मी गनमायन नामानुके स्तोत्राल चेलिच्छुटुनाहु प्रवाह नायन इदुगो नायन मी माखरु गडीलो नाहुनायना ओ चेवर दिनालो नाहुन्न तन्री ओ यारपॉट प्रकारणगा जारगलुसिने वन्नी जरुतुनायनायना ओ दायना ई चेवर गडीलो दायना ओ मा विश्वासन मैम कापाड़ कोडानुकी सहायिंचे नायना नायन ई बोधिंचे दिनालो कोडमुगिन सबर्तुनायन नमुतुनाहु तन्री ओ ई सामयमुंडगाने मैमु सद्भविन्यागन चेस्कुनुनायना आशिक्तुतो मी वाक्य निविनी प्रवाह मी राकड़कोरके ई मैम सिद्धपोड़नट्लु सहायिंचे नायना मा बरुलो भाजतलन्नी विड्डीचिबेट तन्री याकाग्रतो तन्री ओ नी कोरक एदुरु जूसे भाग्यन दईचे मनु प्राधन यस्ता उनाहुनायना देवा ई साइकल सामयमलो सहायिंचे नायना इदुगो नायना चेरोचना बिडलंदर निचोडंडनायना वर्षाटंक वल्लन तन्री इकाकोथ्मंदी प्रयानमलो उन्नारनायना ओ सकालानुके मनु मज्जुलो नडिपिंचनायन निक्स्तोत्राल चेलिच्छुटुनाहु प्रवाह ओ अधिविधमगणायना ई सामयमलो नी अद्भुतमैन सद्धिद मात्तो उन्छन्दनायना नी परिष्ठुदात्मा भिषेकुंतो मनु मज्जुलो कदलाडंडनायना नी एग्नी स्तम्म मिकड़ कादलाडुनु गाखा नी देवुदो तलसायन समोहबुलो प्रवाह ओ यिकड़ आवरिंचे दर गाखा ओ सातार शक्तिलो प्रभावानी येसु कृष्णा मोलो गदिस्तुनाहु तन्री ओ नी सद्धिद यिकड़ प्रकाशिंचु नगाखा ओ नी कार्यल यिकड़ जरुगुनु गाखा ओ मादेवजनलो नायनारुन कुमारगण न्याप्को यस्कुनुनायना मी दासुनिके सम्पूर्ण मनु स्वस्थारिकिंद दईचे नु तन्री ओ तन्री नायना मा बलहिंतलयोंदर ई शक्तिनायन सम्पूर्ण मोगुनुतुन्नदेनी प्रवाह पवुल गरंटनट्लुगा तन्री बलहिंतलोलो ने नी दासुनिके शक्तिरिची प्रवाह नायना उन्नी वलंगा वाड़ु कुटुन्नदेनु निक्स्तोत्राल चेलिच्छुटुनाहु प्रवाह इकाने सावुकनुका आर्ग्यनी बलमनु दईचे नु ओ कुटुमान बलपर्चन नायना संगन बलपर्चन प्रवाह ई साइकल सामयमलो देवजनलो सिंडेगर निमर मनु मज्जुलो नडिपिंचन्दुकुन्न ई स्तोत्राल चेलिच्छुटुनाहु नायन ई दासुर वाक्य निवितु चोनअपुडु प्रवाह नी आत्मा भिषेकुंतो निम्पि नायना मंद्र हृदयालेरिगिन देवुरो प्रवाह ई रात्री नी वाक्य उदार मंद्रतो नेरिग शूटिगा माट्ठाडंड प्रवाह अद्भुतं चेंडनायना अधिविधंगा प्रवाह ई सावुकुड़ नायना जोशी कुमारगण नायना ओ तेरिगलो तजमा यस्ता उन्नपुडु तन्री नी दासुर कोडा नी भिषेकुंतो निम्पि ओ मंचिगा ट्रांसलेशन चेटानु सहायिंचे नायना ओ तेलिगन भादुलो तन्री माकु मंचिम माटलु निमर दईचे नु प्रवाह नी भिषेकुंतो रुड्डनु गाखा पाटलो पाटचुड्डुका पाटलो तोड़े इंदनुनायना पाटलो पाटे बिडलकोडा नी भिषेकुंतो निम्पुपोड्डे सहायिंचे नु भिषेकुंतो पाटन अपुडु अंदर हृदयालो कदलिकदाईचे मनु प्राधन यस्ता उनाहु तन्री नायन संगित वायजल वायजे बिडलंबर धीमिंचंडु प्रवाह ओ गोप्पदेवुरा नी कुंद्राल चेलिच्छुटुनाहु नायना आप बिडल बलपर्चन दे माधुरी मनु संगित निपिंपचे नु प्रवाह ई रंगमेद गरंडनायना मी यिकड़ कदलाडंडु प्रवाह बिडलंदर कोडा नी वाक्य निविन तन्री नी कोरके जीविचे गोप्प भाग्यन दईचे मनु प्रादिस्तुनाहु तन्री नायन संगित एक्का प्रवाह डिकेंस अंट्रेट्स टिस्ट प्रवाह और अंदर यिकड़ मर्द बलपर्चन प्रवाह नायना ई संघनी नायना ओ मंचिगा नडिपिंचनानुके तन्री वर्कुड़ मंचिहालोचल दईचे मनु प्रादिस्तुन संगन मर्द बलपर्चन प्रवाह मी सद्धिद मात्तो उन्छुवनुनायना ई कुड़िक प्रारंभ मुंडी मुगिंपुरकु मी आत्माद्यक्षितलो जरिगिच्छुवनी मा प्रवाह इना येसु कृष्ण एक्का प्रसस्तमयन नाममलो ई प्राधन अडुगुचुनाहु अमेन अमेन गैड ब्लेस यू सामयमलो स्त्रियलो वैपिंका कुचिले वेंडी वनिकाला तेज़ वाची मका स्तुतिकेयतन पाड़ो ई निपिंच्वाल्संग कोर्तावुन्न सामयमलो ई माद्दे स्तुतिकेयतन पाड़तावुन्नुड़गमर रणदरम कोडले चिन्नलबडी मनु प्रभुर मनु स्तुतिंदम रिस्सोगम्या प्रवालके कोड़ो का पाट पीस्कुनुंडंडी मेरु प्राइस गर्लेलुया देवनी गनानु महिमा कल्लिंगाका अंदरुंगल सीपंदुम्दो केतना यहो नामरलालिंचिने निकेतन पाटकुन देवना महिमा बच्कुन्न
यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन अहर निशलदई यहीनुड़गुना यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन महादयनु नदुगणिंचिनो पिशाचिगडी मी पड़गुट्टिनो दन पिशाचिगडी मी पड़गुट्टिनो दन प्रशांतमधुरस विशेष वापल यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन महादयनु ननुगणिंचिनो मधावलमुबोलु नामदिन दन प्रदीप्त वाक्यम पुष्पतिन मधावलमुबोलु नामदिन दन प्रत्यावाक्यम पुष्पतिन यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन ये सुनाधुरक्तमुन मुंचिनो ये सुनाधुरक्तमुन मुंचिनो विनूतनयत्नमेदनु नी एन्नडु यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन स्रेम कलापमुलकु सेलविचिनो स्रेम कलापमुलकु सेलविचिनो कलावलु मनसुलो ननिलिपेनु यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन नन्नु गुच्चि तनसुपिनिदाचका नन्नु गुच्चि तनसुपिनिदाचका यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन महादयनु नदुगणिंचिनो यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन अहर निशलदई यहीनुड़गुना यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन यहो वना मोरलालिंचिनो दन महादयनु नदुगणिंचिनो
रिस्सोगम्या प्रवालका पाटाइंद तर्वत एस्तेरगरु कोडमरोकावकाश एकमैन पाटपाटानुकी रेडीगा उन्नंडी तेते स्त्रियलो वैपिंका कुचिले वेंडा नुके
ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे निरासलो नेनुंडे नपुडू निरीक्षणतो निम्पे दी वाक्यमे निरासलो नेनुंडे नपुडू निरीक्षणतो निम्पे दी वाक्यमे परीक्षलो नेक्रुंगे नपुडू विजय मिट्टी निली पे दी वाक्यमे परीक्षलो नेक्रुंगे नपुडू विजय मिट्टी निली पे दी वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे वेदनतो नेहलसी नपुडू नम्मदिकलिगिंचे दी वाक्यमे वेदनतो नेहलसी नपुडू नम्मदिकलिगिंचे दी वाक्यमे बादलतो नेहलिसिगिन नपुडू विश्वासम्पेंचे दी वाक्यमे बादलतो नेहलिसिगिन नपुडू विश्वासम्पेंचे दी वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे सत्र मूकन नन्नु चुट्टी नपुडू युद्धमु जरिगिंचे दी वाक्यमे सत्र मूकन नन्नु चुट्टी नपुडू युद्धमु जरिगिंचे दी वाक्यमे मित्रोलंत विडिचे पेट्टी नपुडू आनंदम्पंचे दी वाक्यमे मित्रोलंत विडिचे पेट्टी नपुडू आनंदम्पंचे दी वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे वाक्यमे सत्य वाक्यमे वाक्यमे निच्या वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे ननु नड़ीपिंचे दीवा वाक्यमे इला प्रतिकिंचे देवा वाक्यमे
मनु प्रभावी नायु सुकृष्टिमा महम्मकल गुनगाका हैलेलुया देखचे पुरुषलो बाईट अकर कुच्चन्नवलंद्र लापट चचलो काली कुच्चील मुंद पूछे ने देखचे सी चचलो चाला कुच्चील अला काई चुन मी मुंद पुरुषली यादर वर्षा कोडा देखचे सी अला वंचोद्दू मी मुंद कुच्चीले तरगा मीर मुंद गोच्चे स्थे वैन कोण्या वर मी मुंद गोच्चा स्थरू असला कुच्चील कालीगा वंचोद्दू बाईट उन्ना ब्रदर्स कोडा मर चचलन कोच्चे स्थे बाहुंटा दी इतिकंट एकड़की कुच्चील कालीगा कन्पर्ता उन्ने मज्जलो चाला कुच्चील कालीगा उन्नटिका कन्पर्ता उन्दे रिसामी लोक तेज जावची मरका प्रचेक मन पाठपड़ोल्स मिलकर कोर्ता उन्ना प्रेज दल लेलुया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम मने केतना पढ़बंधन मरकल्सी चप्पल परम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम ये सईया नी प्रेम वर निम्पग चालनया ये सईया नी प्रेम वर निम्पग चालनया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम इन्सकूडनई नन्नु दयतो कापाडिनावो दूषकूडनई नन्नु एंथो सहिंचिनावो इन्सकूडनई नन्नु दयतो कापाडिनावो दूषकूडनई नन्नु एंथो सहिंचिनावो ये सईया नी मनसु वर निम्पग चालनया ये सईया नी मनसु वर निम्पग चालनया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम अपराधिनई ननेनु प्रीस्तुतो कूडनन्नु प्रतिकिंचिना ये सईया अपराधिनई ननेनु प्रीस्तुतो कूडनन्नु प्रतिकिंचिना ये सईया ये सईया नी कृपणो वर निम्पग चालनया ये सईया नी कृपणो वर निम्पग चालनया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम नीर देवुडनई नन्नु दयतो मनिंचिनावो दूरस्तुडनई नन्नु पिलची ओधाचिनावो नीर देवुडनई नन्नु दयतो मनिंचिनावो दूरस्तुडनई नन्नु पिलची ओधाचिनावो ये सईया नी रुणमो चेलिंपग चालनया ये सईया नी रुणमो चेलिंपग चालनया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम ये सईया नी प्रेम वर निम्पग चालनया ये सईया नी मनसु वर निम्पग चालनया ये सईया नी रुणमो चेलिंपग चालनया चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम चालु नया नी कृपा ये सईया अनुदिनम हैलेलुया चोरगा सिस्टर रेच चलो चिमरका प्रचेक मन पाठपड़ोल्स दिले कोर्ता उन्ना
ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया साच्य मोखा नी वाटिनी नम्मनी नी वाटिनी साच्य मोखा नी वाटिनी नम्मनी नी वाटिनी नी विच्य गलवया ना ये सईया नी विच्य गलवया ना ये सईया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया योग्य तालेनी दाननु ये मंचिनी दाननु उदय इंचे नी कृपा ना हृदयलो ये सईया योग्य तालेनी दाननु ये मंचिनी दाननु उदय इंचे नी कृपा ना हृदयलो ये सईया आशिंचिना वारीकी आडळीकी ना वारीकी आशिंचिना वारीकी आडळीकी ना वारीकी आशलु तीचे ना वकलमईना विजय देवुडा ना नजरे युडा नाक्षीमाधर मुनीवे ना आशयवं गयुनीवे नाक्षीमाधर मुनीवे ना आशयवं गयुनीवे नाक्षीमं ना आशनीदे सईया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया राछ्य बडिना नी संगल्पम बयलु पर्च गलवया शत्रुवकु चीकनीयका नड़ीपिंच गलवया राछ्य बडिना नी संगल्पम बयलु पर्च गलवया शत्रुवकु चीकनीयका नड़ीपिंच गलवया वाड़ा वारनीयका ओडळीपूनीयका वाड़ा वारनीयका ओडळीपूनीयका विजय पदमुलो नड़ीपिंचे विजय सीलुडा ना नीति सूर्युडा ना जीवित गम्यमु नीवे ना आशयवं गयुनीवे ना जीवित गम्यमु नीवे ना आशयवं गयुनीवे ना जीवं ना स्वं नीवे सईया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया आत्मय यात्रलो ना गुरी सियोनी नड़ीपिंच गलवया ना तो नी उंडी आत्मय यात्रलो ना गुरी सियोनी नड़ीपिंच गलवया ना तो नी उंडी गोरे पिल्ला विंदुलो आनंददय कमई गोरे पिल्ला विंदुलो आनंददय कमई आनंदिंचे द संतोषिंचे द आराजुडा ना आज्ञतीयुडा स्तुति घनता महिमयु नीके चेलिंतुन प्रव्वा नीके स्तुति घनता महिमयु नीके चेलिंतुन प्रव्वा नीके स्तुति घनता महिमयु नीके सईया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया साच्य मोखा नी वाटिनी नम्मले नी वाटिनी साच्य मोखा नी वाटिनी नम्मले नी वाटिनी नी विच्य गलवया ना ये सईया नी विच्य गलवया ना ये सईया ये दईना नी विच्य गलवया ना जीवित निविसया
हैलेलुया देवर की स्तोत्र नगलुनगाका हैलेलुया कुड़वची नासोदरी सोदरलंद्र की तोडी स्यावकलुकु यसुकृष्ट नाममुलो नवनात्तिली जास्तनानु अलगे बांबे निंची मन मध्य गोच्चीना मन प्रशस्ता स्यावकलु मरी स्टीफन सामिल शिनेगर कुड़ा ना प्रचेक मन एट वंडी वंदनात्तिली जास्तना मरी रोजो देवड़तन महाक्रपचेता मरुक सारी वाक्य मिनडानकी वाक्य द्वारा देवड़ मांग दर्शिंस्तानकी मनकी चिन्या अवकाशन कोरके निंद देवनकी स्तुति चल्लिस्तावनानु हैलेलुया सरे मंच दी प्रिलार मरी सरगटयानकी वर्षम पडतुंदी वर्षम वच्चे दिगटिगा पुरुष तगिना मरी वस्तान उंदिंका सरे इरोज मरी आलेनिस्तनारगा बट मरी कोणत्मंद एल देगिरा उड्डुपे चोस्तनार अनुकुटनाव अलगे यानु सोहदरल कोडा मर चचलो कुड़कुनार नम्मुतुनाव सिगस्ट मट्टनोवालु मरी बड़ोवालंग वालु कोडा मर कुड़कुनार नम्मुतुनाव मरी इंदिकंटी रोजो अंदरकी अनुकोलंगली दे रावणानकी सरे देवड़ मरकंतो गोपा क्रपण इच्छा डू अंदर बट निंद देवन तोस्तुतिस्तना मंदिरमुलो उंडी लेका देवनी सन्निदलो उंडी वाक्य मिनड़ु मरी दी चाला मंच कार्यमु अधि देवड़ अंदरकी चिन्या अवकाशन गादु कोणदरकी चिन्या अवकाश मयंदी मन आवास्यतो वस्ते देवड़ तपुकन्ना मांग दर्शिस्ताडु मरी Manavashu tovasthe devu tapukonamal darshistaadu, mari shindegarikosu andhariki tilisinaparistiti. Mari peddavaishkulu, mari urduilainapadukayaena ala unro. Kevalon devu dyanaki ento krupanistu, mari oduvuki sarayina vaakyaparichere chedanaki devu dyanirupistavunadu. Andhenobatni devanikumana vendano entagano stutulichellinchali. Priilara mari heroesil ento galibilunai ikaalamalo, mari sanghalamadhi galibili leka ortamamalune chala galibilulechini ikaalamalo. Mari anubho, anubhoontopatu chala adbutamayana sarayina twenty vaakyapichakshata. Leka baylupatu kaligina vakasavakunni manakaligunadu, adi ento gopadhanjata. Devanikistotram, mari alanti varitu devu manakichina sahasanobatni antena devanikumana ronoshtalama yunnam. Devanikumana mayimakaligunuga ka. Kabati sanghaneke nichenga ayidurakala parichere tapakavasanu, mari ayidurakala parichere njeppi avarparithavali. Priichkoni vaakyamirnon kadugani, mari shindegaru, pastra garuayna, dhanipadayna upadeshakuni manchi, abhishekam kodayinukundi. Karuka chala manchu upadeshakalu, alage mari sanghaneke pastra garayna, mari basallo, veedallo, trainlo, Bombay trainlo akadaakada. Mari sigu padukonda devunakoraku swarthanuchipina vakachakati mancha anubhoongalina twenty devansavakulu. Devanikistotra kalunuga ka, mari alanti savakuluto vakachakati sahasamichi, mari devu malni sarayina margamalo narupistunaduku. Nizanga ne manamantoh, danyulama yunnam maninamuthuna, devanikistotra kalunuga ka. Hallelujah. Sare samiyo mari shindegaru vaakyinchep taru mari translation kosu tryjessen, gani evadu dorakalidu. Mari leka mana unna mana priya sohodaralu, mari ento aptalu. Anet twenty Joshi garne nind requestjessen, nube meere translatecheseninkha. Indigante nakchesa hoopikalidu pudu, leda edu nilabadutunagani, anto hoopikalidu kabati meere cheyendanjeppi requestjessenapudu, ainakuda chala pramato mari angigarinchichedanakupukunaru. Dejess manasanghalo meere pradhancharasindentante mukenga, ekku mandi yavunastalu swarthakalagali. Yavunastalooniche translation jesewalu, leavalanjeppi manupradhanchayali. Priilara tappanasarakha, indigante sangham fogeskondu bol mandi akruunchikodame gopukadugani. Nizanga devuni savakfilipunte konthamandenu baitike, pampichisavaki valni abhishekinch pampichedu kodamanchidi. Karuka mari savakulu leavali ichivardhanallo ivartamara muskupayavalu, leavali ades samiyo lo chakkaga translating jesewal chadukunavalu chakkatolunaru. Karuka mari alantolu manchan interestunavalu translation kosu setupadute, chala bhaguntidi mari tapakai vishyani gurtinsandi. Sanghamupradhanamshalo dhanukoda mari tappanasarakha meere petti, nichenga mari meero pradhanjeyaladu ninkortunam. Devanikistotra kalunuga ka, nind edugantlakke epal anukunan, kani varsham ochina karunchata latechessenu, andher lategaostaru. Sare edunarkke epal anukunna kabati kunshu latega ochamo, manchidi ochina me andhanobatni devanikistotralu. Devuameekavakashvichaladu me namuthunara, devanikistotram, YouTube lo vinayakanna mukamukuka vinte chala manchiga untidi. Nizwana kadadi, nizwana ndi, meero pranampothadheyaman chapkandi, eedi? Amel, amel, pranampothadheyanat chapkandi. Gattiga chepitene noor bhaagatiristere devu dhaniputadu, devanikistotra gattiga japande, hallelujah. Intlo mogadame dkaakalayadukuntadi. Apurvaish akarle, vadhu vaththapadu vaish manake kavte, bolanta. Intlo kakaalayadanaki, chindalayadanaki, okana, adi anta ikkadi juvinshandi. A chindalu kakaalekade eshte manalo onna enni baitikibhotai. Devanikistotram, gattiga amenjepthe vaakyamardhanjescu nakabhishekamostadu manameeruki, devu mayimakalunuga ka. Hallelujah, karuka andharakoda equality jeptho, amenjeptho, devanistutistavunndandi, vaakyani lakkondi, manchidi. Joshi garu koda nind vedukamadigalankaris, mari ahvanisthananu, dejess vedukamadigaravalanukortunanu ipudu. Iyaka sabano shindegarakni nind apogesthananu. Now I turn to this service to Brother Stephen Samuel Shinde from Bombay. He will take the service and share the word of God with us. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord. God bless you all.
Devu me landan devunchunuga ka.
I'm so happy over here this evening.
Isayinkalam ikkada nakantosantoshinga undi.
Actually, I never had a plan to come over here this time.
Isamimalo ikkadi vastanen anukolidu.
But God is having his own ways.
Adi devu tanasontamargan kaligunadu.
Because Bible says.
Devanikvaakyinchepthavandi.
The footsteps of the righteous man, but I'm not righteous, but the footsteps of the righteous man have been preordained by God.
Neethmadunaka adugujaadalu devunchata airportchaybadai.
I didn't come, he brought me here.
Nenu raavalanukolidugani devu dhananikadu chesukunachadu.
I'm so happy that he gave me the privilege to come over here.
Kankha nind chala santoshisthananu ikkara ravadanaki devu nakankarunchini samyambati.
We bypass ganti also.
Ganti nikudan bypasscheshamu.
Well, very sorry, but God brought pastor here.
Nind chala vicharisthananite mari ikkadi pasrakani ikkadi chesukunachadu.
I'm so happy for both the pastors.
Edru devujanlanubatni chala santoshistavano nu.
God bless them and even the brother pastors.
Mari devu var devujan gaake korunati twenty devusavakulubatkoda var devu.
I love you too.
Nind me landan nepremishtanani nind meekchellijastavano.
I know there's some of them, they are waiting for me.
Chala mandis devusavakul nakoraku ostanidru chosthanaru.
But if the Lord permits me, gives me little more time, I will surely be happy.
Devu dhanakana abasamimisthe tappanasarakha mee sanghalenenu darshinchalnaashpadthavano nu.
Now I'm running eighty-one.
Nenu yanabeyoksa samtralo varigadthavano nu.
But I realize my time is closer, coming closer.
Adi na samimai potavandi mugimpalo kosthananenu gutisthananu.
Not heading to the bad thing, but the better.
Adi mari inka, inka unnatamena leka manchistithilo nikvalalnaashpadthavano nu.
Because God is having his plan for all of us.
Indigante devu vakapranalika manandarkoraku kaligunadaina.
Already, this is the twelfth meeting.
Idi panindava koodikana ku.
And I'm a little tired.
Adi nind chala konta alaspuyavano nu.
Because due to the age and all my strength is diminishing.
Indigante mari vaisunubatni mari nind kunshu balihendachendeyavano nu.
That I told many times, I come to Andhra Pradesh.
Nind chala saljepanu mari Andhra Pradesh ochinabdella.
When my battery goes down.
Nenu kunshu balihendachendena pudu.
I come over here to just get charging.
Adi ikkadi gochinabdella kuda ninkha balampundukodanake vastanavano.
After going over from here to Mumbai.
Nind ikkani nchi Bombay villaidabudu.
People, they will say, oh, something happened to pastor.
Bombay lo onnavalu yavunkonradu ma pasrakar kido jerigindanukuntarval.
Because I don't tell them, I go for a charging.
Nind indikika ikkadi vastanavano valaki delidugani nind ikkada balampundukodake vastanavano.
Because all your wonderful love and the spirit.
Meandharayoka prama ikkuna twenty abhishekannubatni.
I will say, God bless all of you.
Kankha nind me landanidainubatni devu me devunchunuga ka kandelijasthana.
I'm so happy this evening.
Ni mari isayinkalasaamul nind chala santoshingavano nu.
You see, one of our guests, where is that guest?
Vaka atidi mari mana majalau naru, ekdunnarayaka atidi.
Our sister Esther.
Sister Esther Gar.
God bless you.
God bless her sister.
She's just like my daughter.
Amay na yaka kumartheladidi.
All of us, we love that family.
Mari me mandaramu kuda a kutumbani premishtanam.
And we have ministered for them also. We have preached for them.
Amem variki, akri kivelli vaakyinchepunakuda jerigindi.
God bless you.
Sister, God bless you.
For coming over here.
Mari Esther Gar ikkadi gochinanduku variki.
But I'm a little angry on you.
Me meedana kunshu koopanga undi.
You're doing a partiality.
Nu pakshapathunjuvishtanav.
Me being a senior, you should have given me more time.
Mari ekku samama sister ikkada untnadainubatni shindegaru.
But I'm so happy to see you here.
Devu marasahodarli salaamalo chotun chala santoshung.
So God bless all of you.
Oh, devu me landan devunchunuga ka.
If you check your, your, this, what do they call it, voice? Because this is the, this is the old diesel engine.
Voice checkchiskandi idi, mari patha diesel engine idi.
There are petrol engines.
Ikkadu petrol engines kodavunnae, yatraru.
You put the key and it will start and go.
Akki ivagane mari chala vaganga parigadthai.
But I have an old diesel engine.
Nenu chala patha diesel engine.
It takes time to get warm.
Veedakitaanu kunshu time padthadi.
But once it gets warm.
Adi veedekina tharavata.
Difficult to stop it.
Adi aadun chala kastavutadi.
But as you see your high pitch or something, because after some time my voice may increase.
Kunshu samimaintharavathunayaka swaram payiketta padthadi.
So this evening I would like to just put some of the things in front of you.
Iyaka isayinkalasaamul me mundukoni sangatalu mundupetalnaashpadthavano nu.
So, want to speak about the final end time message.
Iyaka antikala swarthanugurichi matladalnaashpadthavano nu.
What end time believers they believe that that is the final message.
Iyantikala misvasi edaithe namuchunadu adhe chivari vartamamayum.
That is the capstone message.
Adhe talaray vartamam.
Final message.
Adhe antikala vartamam.
And after this message, there cannot be any higher message.
Deeni tharavatinkha yee vidamena unnatamena vartamamamekundabodu.
And that message, third pull message is so powerful.
Kankha mudava yedupu vartamamadhi chala shaktivanthamena vartamamayum.
And where are that those who believe in seven thunder, seven virtues, they are thinking, boy, when that power will come, we will just bring the fire and we can raise the dead and we can do this science and wonders.
Yedu urmulu, yedu mari ayaka gunalaxshnalone twenty vartamanalni, namuthunandantu valandai yamanukunnarinte, edo mari agrin diskochi lekupu dujiban diskuravalni edu valtryjastavunnaru.
So that may be true.
Adi vakvala satyamayundachu.
But what we have to see.
Manameedu edu chodalinte.
We have to understand what is that message, capstone message.
Adi manam kachithenga ardhanjescovali, talaray vartamam entane idi, manam tapakardhanjescosunavamen.
If you can put that, a structure of a perfect man, I'll, if it is, or otherwise.
Ikkada paripurnamamana soru.
If there is possible.
Adi patikalra.
So what is that message?
Eendya vartamam.
So this evening I would like to bring some of the thoughts in front of you, what the Lord has just put on my heart.
Devu na hrodhimalo edaithe uncharado, isayinkalasaamul vaatni me mundupetalnaashpadthavano nu.
Many people are having different, different views about that last message.
Iyaka chivarkala vartamanaugurichi chala mandi anekarakalane twenty talampulu alochil kaligunavaragavunnaru.
But everybody is having their own views.
Pratyvaru kuda tamaku tamayaku santatalampu kaligunadu.
They got the right to have their views.
Indigante valika hakkundi, val tamayu santalochil kaligunadanaki.
But it has to be according to the Bible.
Adi kachithenga adi vaakyanusaaranaga undavalisunadi.
Everything has to be according to the Bible.
Pratidhi kuda devuni vaakyanusaaramaiduga undal.
So we have to check everything, whatever the preacher says, or whatever the believer says, or thinks, that it has to compare with the word of God.
Kankha devujanalu prasangikalechiptunaru, visvasilechiptunarantundidani, vaakyamutomana sari polchchodavalisunavaramayunam.
Where I was born in Nazarene, I wouldn't care for this Bible.
Nenu Nazarene netwan sangamalo mari putnapudu, asli parishuddhagrandamagurichi emi patinchukunavanduka.
Though that church was very emphasizing on a holiness.
Mari parishuddhadanugurichi val chala mari kachithenga val bodinchetwani sangamayana paduke kuda.
My father was a wonderful man.
Ma tendragar chala adbutamena twenty vikti.
But I did not have much interest in the Bible, miss, we were not interested, only Sunday we could read that.
Kankha nenu Bible gurichi anta asakti kaligunadu twenty one gaadi edo adivaramaatrime Bible chadutavundevani.
Since I came to this message, this book become a very precious.
Chodandi vartamamana irguchinderavata, i parishuddhagrandamana kantu isthamena grandamga mariindi.
This book become Bible, become a new book.
Iyaka parishuddhagrandamadhi nakidu vakunotanamena krotthagrandanga mari bhandi.
And then, sometimes I think, that what kind of book it is.
Kunsharulina mari denugurichi alochistavunna ellati grandamidani.
If there are different books.
Chala mari vityasemanapustkal grandalunai.
Some of the novels will be on a detective story.
Mari kunni novelso laputikunni kunni katalapustkalundai.
Some of the books will be love story.
Kunni prama katalu undedwandi grandalunai.
Some of the books will be on a specially on a crime.
Kunni mari a crime sentence, a nairalugurichinandantu pustkalu.
And we know that by reading the title, you can understand what will be the material inside.
Ayaka mari title, thane mentar, pustkummeda mundu emundadi, sirshaka.
Yes.
Danubatni lople emundani manamo.
Then, this book is having a sirshak the title, it is written holy Bible.
Iyaka grandamumundu parishuddhagrandamani ikkada mari title bettabandindi.
I was thinking about that.
Nizanga ne danugurichi nind alochistavano.
Just one side of the coin.
Vaka mari ayaka naanemayaka vakaprakka.
If it is a holy Bible, then all the chapters and the books has to speak the holy thing.
Idi kankha parishuddhagrandamaithe, prati adhyayamalunu kuda parishuddhagurichemmatladavalisundi.
Just where we open that one.
Mari dhanam manam terichinabudu.
Second chapter, third chapter.
Rendu adhyayamu, mudu adhyayamu.
My, there is a devil in that book.
Andhalo duram leka dayamu, sataduk manaku pratekshavutadu.
A serpent.
Samar sarpamu.
Most deceiving.
Chala mosagadu.
Having a fleshly desire in the heart.
Vadiyaka hrodhimalo sharanasammanamendantu koorikadu kaligunakoorikunakaligunavadu.
Try, try to just deceive and spoil the, the God's child.
Devu nekka pillalni mosaginsidanaki, pauduchedanaki, praytnamjastavunadu.
Do you like that?
Vand meiro istapadthara.
The serpent is bigal, bigal, the God's child.
Ayaka devu nekka bidalni leka mari mosaginsidamana idi me istapadthara.
In your society, if somebody has raped some young girl, will you like their story? If some man has raped the, the girl, innocent girl.
Vaka aadupelaina, me samajamalo, yee yavunastudaina, mari mosamchadu me istapadthara.
Will you say it is good?
Adi manchikaariyamani me namchepthara miru?
No.
Kadu.
But it's very bad.
Chala chaddaviyshyamadi.
Next step.
Rendu amma tharavata.
In this book.
Iyaka grandamalo.
A brother killed his own brother, murder.
Mari tana santasahodarne mari hatyachesene twenty ayaka kayinugurichmanachosthanam.
You call it holy Bible.
Adi parishuddhagrandamani chappakalamamandini.
Here, the serpent, bigal, and spoil the young.
Ikkada ayaka streeni sarpamu mosaginchindi, pauduchesindi.
And we call it holy Bible.
Deenmanam parishuddhagrandamani pilisthanam.
You go ahead.
Alaguna manavela thavundinte.
The sin was bound upon the whole face of the world.
Iyaka, yaka lokamantadame edupay, phapamani dikrumbarinsabandindi.
And there was no sin like that.
Alati phapamu, mari ekkada manachodam.
Everywhere seen and seen and seen and seen.
Yaka mari ekkada jusina phapamu, phapamu, phapamu.
Do you think that that is a holy?
Meen nizanga ne dhaniparishuddhadanichap anukunna alochistara, tharastara.
Then afterward, God destroyed all these wicked people.
A tharavata manachosthanabudu devudi prapanchasana, prapanchamantadu kuda saravanaashnajesedaina.
God saved the family.
Devu vakutumbani rakshinchadu.
Take them to another place, another world.
Ayaka tharavata vara mari, mari, a migilaprapanchan manachosthanam.
A man of God planted the vineyard and made a wine and drunk and become naked.
Chodandi devu nekka savakulane twenty novahu, drakshatvadu vesithu. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Whatever it is, but the title says the holy book.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
You take Abraham's love, you take Ishmael and Isaac and fight and hatred and malice and kyle throughout Bible.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
You see Judah, he went to his daughter-in-law.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Take those of that book, that brother and they hated his brother.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
How they were beating him, how they persecuted, hatred and malice and kyle.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
And still they say it is a holy Bible.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
You come Solomon, David.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Ah, David is such a great man.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But you know that when he was having five hundred wives.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
And one day evening he was roaming on a terrace instead of going in a prayer.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
She forgot to pull the curtain while taking a bath.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
And he looked that one.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
I want that woman.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
How to get that one?
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But she is married.
Then, you have to read it.
I cannot take when she is married.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
I will set him in a war, in a frontline.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
And he will get killed and then.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Prophet came.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
It's been done.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Do you think that that is a good story?
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
It is not a good story.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But the book says holy Bible.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
I don't understand.
Then, you have to read it.
You open any page anywhere.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
You come in the New Testament.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
You see the so-called holy people.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But situation is not good.
Then, you have to read it.
Everywhere seen and seen and seen.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Brother, sister.
Oh, dear brother.
Book says holy Bible.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But I want to tell you.
Then, you have to read it.
This is not your story and my story.
Then, this is your story.
This is not a story what Adam's wife has done.
Then, what Adam did.
This is not a story what you have done.
Then, what you did.
There is a prodigal son.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
The parable says the prodigal son.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But this is not story, not regarding the prodigal son.
Then, this is your story.
That boy went away.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
Living in a dirty life.
When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
But that is not the story of that prodigal son.
Then, this is your story.
I, I, I don't like that.
Then, you have to read it.
That title for me, it is wrong.
Then, you have to read it.
It is, it is not the story of the prodigal son.
Then, this is your story.
It is not the story of the lost lamb, lamb sheep.
Then, this is your story.
It is not the story of a woman lost the coin.
Then, this is your story.
It is the story not of the prodigal son, it is the story of a good father.
Then, this is your story.
What a wicked boy was.
Then, you have to read it.
He gave a pain, trouble in the family. But it is not the story of that boy.
Then, this is your story.
It is the story of a good father.
Then, this is your story.
So we can see love is and grace is above everything.
Hallelujah, when you read the Bible, you have to read it.
It is not a story of the lost sheep.
Then, this is your story.
It is the story of a good shepherd.
Then, this is your story.
It is not my story, how bad I was.
Then, you have to read it.
But it is a story of my Savior.
Then, this is your story.
When I was lost and undone.
Then, you have to read it. When you read the Bible, you have to read it.
How he loved me?
Then, you have to read it.
So it is not my story, your story.
Then, this is your story.
All book is full of the bad things.
Then, you have to read it.
But wherever you see the bad things.
Then, you have to read it.
You find out the grace of God is there.
Hallelujah, when you read the Bible, you have to read it.
When Adam was fallen.
Then, you have to read it.
Lost everything.
Then, you have to read it.
So it is not Adam's story.
Then, this is your story.
It is the story of the father left heaven and came down.
Then, this is your story.
So ever, wherever you see all these stories.
Then, you have to read it.
Stories and bad things.
Then, you have to read it.
If we want to see Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
You will not find him with the Pharisees. You will not find Jesus with the Pharisees, holy people.
Then, you have to read it.
If you want to see Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
You don't go to the holy group.
Then, you have to read it.
Our so-called holy people.
Then, you have to read it.
Don't try to seek him in a such a place.
Then, you have to read it.
Like this wise men, they wanted, they were seeking the king of the kings.
Then, you have to read it.
And they came to Jerusalem.
Then, you have to read it.
Thinking that he will be in Jerusalem.
Then, you have to read it.
But I will say you wise man.
Then, you have to read it.
How foolish you are.
Then, you have to read it.
How foolish you are.
Then, because he won't find, you will not find him with a holy group. Then, you have to read it.
Don't seek in Jerusalem.
Then, you have to read it.
Come to the worst place.
Then, you have to read it.
Come to the worst place.
Then, you have to read it.
And he will find over there.
Then, you have to read it.
Brothers, sisters, if you want to find Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
Don't go to Jerusalem temple with a robe and all these things.
Then, you have to read it.
You want to find him, go to Zakkia, the sinner's house.
Then, you have to read it.
If you want to see Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
Oh, go to the well of Samaria.
Then, you have to read it.
He never made a friendship with the holy people.
Then, you have to read it.
He never made a friendship.
Then, you have to read it.
And he will never make a friendship with so-called holy people.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
Those who say that we pray two times in a day.
Then, you have to read it.
And we give offering of the tithe and everything and Qubean and so many small things also we don't.
Then, you have to read it.
We don't sin, we don't kill, we don't do this.
Then, you have to read it.
And we fast and pray.
Then, you have to read it.
Holy group.
Then, you have to read it.
Jesus never made friendship with you.
Then, you have to read it.
His choice is the sinners.
Then, you have to read it.
His choice is a sinner.
Then, you have to read it.
My Bible says he was the friend of the sinners.
Then, you have to read it.
He never made a friendship with the so-called holy people.
Then, you have to read it.
And he will not find if there's such a good place, but wherever the seed is there, he can, you can find him over there.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
I am so happy.
Then, you have to read it.
It is not your story.
Then, this is your story. Then, this is your story.
That is his Bible.
Then, this is your story.
That how he loved you are being.
Then, you have to read it.
So my mind is, my thought is completely changed.
Then, you have to read it.
I see Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
Prophet said, when you read your Bible?
Then, you have to read it.
Where I read, the crime and theft and stealing and rape and all these things, that things.
Then, you have to read it.
But prophet said.
Then, you have to read it.
When you open any book.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
If you don't see Jesus.
Then, you have to read it.
Read it again.
Then, you have to read it.
Read it again.
Then, you have to read it.
So I believe that the book is full of the sin and bad character, but everywhere, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
Amen, God bless you all.
Then, you have to read it.
I want to share something about the end time message, the final message.
Then, you have to read it.
Don't try to be holy.
Then, you have to read it.
Because how much more we will try to become a holy? How much we will try to become a holy?
Then, you have to read it.
Saint Paul tried throughout his life.
Then, you have to read it.
That I will wash myself.
Then, you have to read it.
And I will become a clean and I will be just like a ready to go to God heaven.
Then, you have to read it.
I also tried.
Then, you have to read it.
But trying to be holy.
Then, you have to read it.
You cannot become holy.
Then, you have to read it.
Though Jesus Christ told that you must be holy as your heavenly Father is holy.
Then, you have to read it.
The hammer is only for the holy people.
Then, you have to read it.
Deacons elders and members, are you holy?
Deacons, members, everyone is a sinner?
You are so many years the best believer, are you holy?
Then, you have to read it.
Don't lift up your hand.
Then, you have to read it.
I know that you cannot lift up your hand.
Then, you have to read it.
And if you lift up, you are totally misunderstood.
Then, you have to read it.
I am eighty-one years.
Then, you have to read it.
I also tried and tried.
Then, you have to read it.
I left, trying to become a holy.
Then, you have to read it.
Because it is beyond my strength and ability.
Then, you have to read it.
I don't want to seek my own holiness.
Then, you have to read it.
All these things are the filthy rags, filthy rags.
Then, you have to read it.
We attend the church regularly?
Then, you have to read it.
We must come.
Then, you have to read it.
I give tithe and offering, small, small things.
Then, you have to read it.
I don't lie.
Then, you have to read it.
I don't do any bad work.
Then, you have to read it.
Yeah, that is good thing.
Then, you have to read it.
But on that one, you are not going to go to heaven.
Then, you have to read it.
You have not chosen him, he has chosen you and me.
Hallelujah, when you read the Bible, you have to read it.
So we will stand up on our feet.
Then, you have to read it.
It is eight o'clock, so I will be, maybe nine thirty will be okay, okay, as the pastor is very kind-hearted every time. Thank you very much. We will open our Bible from the Romans chapter nine.
Romans chapter nine?
Romans chapter nine.
Romans chapter nine?
And we will read thirty-one to thirty-three.
Then, you have to read it. 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 Then, you have to read it.
Amen, may God bless you.
Then, you have to read it.
Amen, I will read the last words, thirty-three. As it is written, behold, I lay in Zion a stumbling stone and rock of office, and whosoever believeth on him shall not be ashamed. May God bless you, what shall we pray? Father God, we said thank you for this wonderful time that thou was given us, Lord, and thou was brought me over here to have a fellowship with your children, our brothers and sisters. Father God, you are here, we pray that will speak with us. Speak to me, speak to my brothers and sisters. Bless each and every one of us and prepare our lives for your coming. Father God, put the appropriate words in our mouth and in our heart, Lord. Bless your servant pastor Josi, Lord. Father God, give him the, this, that he may just catch these broken words and make a sense to his people, Lord. Bless him to Lord, bless all the ministers, bless this assembly, bless pastor, and everyone in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
You may be seated? This is the final message.
This is the time of the Lord.
Which is called the final capstone message.
Then, you have to read it.
Capstone message is the greatest one.
Then, you have to read it.
But we know that the, this message is such a wonderful message.
Then, you have to read it.
Brother, sister, what we call the end time message, the capstone message, it is the same stone which was the foundation stone or the cardinal stone, it is the same as the head stone.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
And we know that this stone, it was rejected by the scribes and Pharisees two thousand years back.
Then, you have to read it.
And very few people, they accepted him.
Then, you have to read it.
They only believed that Sora had got saved.
Then, you have to read it.
They rejected their stone.
Then, you have to read it.
But after two thousand years.
Then, you have to read it.
God promised that he will bring that head stone, the capstone, one more time.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
And that when this head stone will come, capstone will come, then the church will get perfection.
Then, you have to read it. Then, you have to read it.
All end time believers, the pastors, minister, will not accept this stone.
Then, you have to read it. When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy. When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
There will be very few people.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You know that, you know that Prophet just interpreted the dream of Junior Jackson.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
How the people, they just couldn't wait for that one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And this sorry is the time, that message.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
First dream was of brother Junior Jackson.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
He saw that many ministers with a brother, they were on a mountain, near, near the mountain.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And because of the rain water, that mountain's soil was washed out.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And there was some of the thing inscription on these rocks.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And it became visible.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And Prophet was telling them what it mean, what it mean, what it mean, what it mean.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And then finally, Prophet taken something very real sharp, like a crowbar or something and he ripped the mountain cap, removed that one. Inside was a white granite stone.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Page number, sorry, is the time, one to five paragraph.
One to five.
So from that one, he ripped the mountain.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And there was this white stone.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
What is that stone?
What is that?
It is the final message.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
That is a cap stone.
That's a stone.
Or a head stone.
That's a stone.
Then what is that cap stone and head stone?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy. Cap stone means, same?
Yeah. So then, one brother, lifted that cap and white stone was seen, white, nothing was.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And Prophet said.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
See you, people, you watch that white stone.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
While they were looking at it.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Prophet said that watch, keep watching.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And some of the people, they went here, there, there, there went, these persons.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But very few people.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
He says very few people, they stayed over there.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
One double three paragraph.
One?
But very few stayed and looked on to what I had told them.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
That is that head stone, that is that stumbling stone.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
That is that stone.
That's a stone.
A very precious.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And it has been spoken, whosoever believeth on him shall be saved.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So what is that head stone, the cap stone?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Brother, went to the waste to just get the revelation.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Now we will see where he went to waste.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And by God's grace, we will see, try to see what he brought.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So we know that before going to the waste.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And sorry, is the time, is that message Prophet taken dreamer's dream.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Up to sixty-two, nineteen sixty-two.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Brother, was doing the ministry, healing and casting out demons, discerning all.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But now, this was the time for him, what God had just, why God had just brought this prophet.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Casting out the demons and healing the sick and discerning who you are, that was not brother, sumayn ministry.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Like Moses was not having a ministry to make a serpent and do this one and do the frog's, that is not the ministry, that was the sign.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So we know that brother, had a ministry as a prophet.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But then he had a ministry more than the prophet.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
For what reason God sent him?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
He sent him for you and me.
Amen. You try to be holy.
That we may come to the perfection.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
His ministry was to bring the perfection for the bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Like Eliezer was sent from the bridegroom to just prepare the bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So the bride was not perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
This Rebecca was not perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But this side from Isaac's side, messenger was sent with a material to just adorn the bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She cannot make herself perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She did not to go to the market and bring by this one and that one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
No, bridegroom has sent the material.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Then she may become a perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Everything was sent through the messenger.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Without that bringing the material, give it to the bride, bride cannot be perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Fourth dream are the, all the dreams speaks about the same thing.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Fourth dream is of Sister Collins.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
One forty-three.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Okay.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Notice immediately after that Sister Collins, are we here Sister Collins? So you see the paragraph.
Tell you, tell you.
Okay, you can see in this one, no problem. So Sister Collins was also having a dream.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
All six dreamers.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And that is the reason, she saw the bridegroom is comes in a perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But the bride wasn't very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Can you see that one?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
It's a time for him to come.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
He is so perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
He is looking for the bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Bride is not perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Bride was not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So do you think that he will get married with that one?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Or really, when she is not very perfect, then is he going to see that, okay, she is not very perfect, I will get another one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Okay, she is not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She is having so many shortcomings, failures.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Really, she is not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And what about the bridegroom?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She is so perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
This speaks about the, right now, the situation.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Now if you want to get married and a young boy.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And you are going to see the girl and you thought of marrying her. You thought that I want to marry this girl.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But she is not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And you are looking for a perfection.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
They have said, but she is not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You may change your decision.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You may change your decision.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
That I will look for another one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You can do that one, I can do that one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But Jesus cannot do that.
Amen. Yes, I will do.
He cannot do that.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Oh, the bridegroom came in a perfect, it's a time for the marriage.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
This is the time, this is the day, this is the hour, he wants to get married.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But when he, when she saw the bride was not very perfect, he is a perfect bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And probably his bride recognized that I am not really fit.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
See, my bridegroom is so perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But still, I am not perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
I want to become a perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But how much more I tried and failed.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
The dream.
That's a stone.
Bridegroom came in a perfect, but the bride was not very perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She was not yet perfect.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But yet, it was the bride.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Hallelujah. She was not perfect, but yet, she is the one, who is going to get married.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But this is that this statement gives me so much courage and hope in my life.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But when I see myself.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
It will see yourself, your trying, your efforts and trying to make holy.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Saint Paul says, I tried to be good, but it is not.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
I am trying to do the good things, but I cannot do that one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And whatever I am not supposed to do, that is the thing I am doing it.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Brothers, sisters, the Ethiopian cannot change his skin. Ethiopian cannot change his skin.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Prophet told at the, this, Jeremiah, Isaiah sixty-four.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Isaiah, sorry.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
God is speaking to this people, to the holy group.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Because they accepted the law instead of the grace.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And they were thinking that we can wash our clothes to be holy according to the Moses' law.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You know that Moses had given them the ten commandments.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Can anybody keep these commandments?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Apart from ten commandments, there are six hundred commandments.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Everywhere he said, touch not.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
If in the house, wife is having a blood issue.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Living in a same house.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
The man should not touch her.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Even the children should not touch her.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
My, nobody should touch her.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
If you will touch, you will be unclean.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And if you become unclean, you have to remain separate for seven days.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
They cannot go in an office, they cannot go in a job.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Hey John, why you are absent for seven days?
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
So what happened, by mistake, I touched my wife.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
That is the law.
That is the law.
That is the law. If somebody touches the dead one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Husband died, child died, wife died.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
My, our heart goes and we just hold that body and weep and weep and kiss.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But you must understand, not to touch.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
I love, love, love her so much, not to touch.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
If you touch.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Then you are unclean for.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Now what a law.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
You are hungry, you are hungry.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
No water.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
To wash your hands.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Before eating, you have to wash your hands.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
One, one disciple, they went to the field and they were just taking, picking the corns and, and doing their, and they were eating.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
COD people came.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
COD, conduct order, doctoring the church order.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Master.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
This COD and question numbers so and so, your disciples, they are eating without eating, washing the hands.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
They are interested in COD.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
What, what the COD says, what the church order says.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Yeah, we have to keep that one.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
One day, Jesus Christ was just going into the temple.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And one of the old lady was, she was just bent and crippled and she was walking.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She couldn't stand.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy. When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And Jesus said, stand up.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
And she was made whole.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Oh, praise your Lord for she was made whole.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
She had a joy.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Our family was having a joy.
When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
But COD people had a problem.
Hallelujah. When you read the Lord's law, you try to be holy.
Conduct order, doctoring, system and all. कंडक्ट आर्डर डॉक्टरी नाव तू सिस्टम एंड ऑल लॉज
वाल्लू सिद्धांतालु आचारालु प्रकारण चुस्ते
सर
ओ यजमानुडा
दे वे इन डी टेम्पल
ओ नीव द्यावालानु अन्नाव
मास्टर
ओ यजमानुडा
यू नो डेट दिस इस डी सब्बाद डे
ओ निक तेलसा इदि सब्बाद वनी निक तेलीदा विसरांत दिनमनि
दिस इस डी सब्बाद डे
इदि विसरांत दिनम सनिवार
हाउ यू डिड डेट वन
ये विसरांत दिनम एम इच्छे कोड कदा निवेला चेस
माह दे आर नॉट इंटरेस्टेड इन डी सोल
चुसरा ओका आत्म रक्षण स्वस्थ विषय मला सख्त ले
दे इंटरेस्टेड इन सीओडी मैसेज एंड मैसेज एंड मैसेज
ओ मैसेज लेखु वर्तमानमु सीओडी ने दानी पटले वाला
डी मैसेज सेज सच कांड आते हैं मैसेज सेज दिस वन डेट वन
मैसेज ले एलाउंडी मैसेज वर्तमान ले विदंगा उन्दी दानी पटले वाला सख्त कलिगुन
वर मैन बुल वाज फॉलन इन डी विल
वका व्यक्ति ओके एतु गोतलो पड़पुइंदी
एंड डेट वाज डी सब्बाद डे
अदि विसरांत दिनम रोज अदि
डी पोर बैन वाज हैविंग अह वेरी पोर ही वेंट एंड ही जस्ट फूल डेट
आ विसरांत दिनम रोज नु पड़पुइन आ एतु लेपुनानिकी वेल्लर डी योका बयादम
मैन वाज वेरी हैप्पी माय बुल इस बीन सेव्ड
ओ एला मरी आये द अभिदंगा आयोका एतु पाइक लेप बटिन ने तन्नो संतोष पड़तावंड
बट बट सीओडी पीपल
आइथे ये योका आ
दे हैड अन दे हैड अन प्रॉब्लम
वाल्लू समस्या गावंदे
मास्टर
ओ यजमानुडा
ओ बुल इस फॉलन
ये एतु पड़पुइन पुडू
हाउ ही रिमूव्ड डेट बुल
दान एलाग पाइक तीसर
दिस इस डी सब्बाद डे
इदि विसरांत दिनम
यू मस्ट नॉट डू डेट
ई रोज असल नट ए पाय ए पनि चेकोड
नो प्रॉब्लम बुल डाइज
एतु चेन्न पे ना परवाले
बट यू फॉलो दिस वन
कच्चितिंग आम दिन मेरू पाठिंसाली जप्तन रवाल
कैन यू सी डी थिंग डी सेम ग्रुप
चुसरा अदे गुम्प मन चोड़कल कुतना मेरोज
डू यू नो डेट डू यू सी डी सेम सिमिलर ग्रुप इस एक्जिस्टिंग इन डी सेम टाइम
ई अंत्य कालमलो कोड अदे रकमाई ने ट्वेंटी गुम्प इप्पुडू कोड उन्ना ने मेरू गमनिंसकल कुतनार अर्ध
ब्रदर सिस्टर यू सी डेट वन
ओ निसंगान आमनु दान चोड़ा सहोदर
जॉन चम्पर ए
यहानु एनुविदी
आ डी वुमर वाज कॉट अप इन डी अडल्ट्री
आ वकस्त्री मरी विभिचार मलो पट्रपटिन
सी वाज वेंट ब्राउन फॉर तू डी मास्टर
आमनु मरी यजमान दारी दिस कुन वच्चर
एंड दे नॉट अलावर तू वेयर डी क्लोथ अल
आम इत्सरे एन ट्वेंटी बटल कोड ले वकड
विंग डी पुलर
आम लाप कुंड वच्चर
एंड ब्राउन तू डी मास्टर
आ यजमान दारी दिस कुन वच्चर
एंड इन वर एंड सीओडी
वरंदर वाल्लू चेदल वक चेदल सीओडी
एंड अनदर हैंड डी बिग स्टोर
मर चेदल पत्र राय उन्दी
हो माय व्हाट अन वर्डफुल चर्च
ओ एलाटी गोप्प संगम अद्भुतमन संग
आल मेंबर्स आर हैविंग डी स्टोन्स इन डी हैंड एंड इन वर हैंड डी लॉ डी सीओडी
वक चेदल अमरी धर्मशास्त्र मंदी मरोक चेदल रायल पटुन वच्चर
मास्टर मास्टर और अन पास्टर
ओ पास्टर
आयु केल व्हाट अन डीस वन सीओडी
चोडंडी ये योका धर्मशास्त्र प्रकारण नु ए जप्त वर डुगुतनार
डेट डी बाइबल सेज सी मस्ट स्टोन तू डेथ
एंद कंडर धर्म सट्ट प्रकारण गमा राल्ला तो कोटिया मन चंपा नु धर्मशास्त्र जप्तुंदी
डेट इस ट्रू
अदि सत्यम
डेट इस ट्रू
अदि सत्यम
बिकॉज़ इट इस डी लॉ
एंद कंडर धर्मशास्त्र उन्दगुनका
वेयर दे ब्राउन अर
वार आमन दिस कोचिन पुडू
मास्टर वाज सिटिंग ओवर डेयर
अकड़ यजमान कुच्चन उन्नाड अकड
डी वुमर वाज लाइंग डेयर
ओ आयोकस्त्री चाल धर्य उन्नाड
ट्रंबलिंग
आम अंतो वडिकपोतावंदे
नाह दे आर गोइंग तू स्टोन हंड्रेड्स अप मेंबर्स
एंद कंडर वंदलमंदी प्रजल अकड़ा राल्ला तो कोट चंपा पोतावन
दिस इस माय लास्ट डे
इदि नायक चेवर दिनम
आई सीन इन माय लाइफ
ओ इदि नायका
यस आई 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 हैव डैन अडल्ट्री
नो निसमे ने विभिचार जसन
आई एम अन सिनर
नेन पापीनी
यस इन डी सीओडी दिस पीपल आर राइट
ओ विलंदर नु चंपा नानिका हकुंड वाल्लू
बिकॉज़ डी सीओडी बाइबल सेज
एंद कंडर सीओडी प्रकारण गमा चट्ट प्रकारण
इफ वन एनी वुमर विल बी फाउंड इन अडल्ट्री सी एंड डी मैन शुड बी स्टोन तू डेथ
ये स्त्री एन विभिचार मलो पट्रपटिते आमे आ व्यक्ति कोड राल्ला तो कोटिया चंपा
डी 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 वेज ऑफ सिनिध डेथ एंड गो तू हेल
एंद कंडर पाप मले योका जीतम पाप मले योका जीतम मरणम
सीओडी पीपल वेर नॉट रॉन्ग
सी आयोक सीओडी मरी प्रजल वाल्लू तप्पुड़ गले
दे वे राइट
वाल्लू वाल्लू मरी मंची मार्गम उन्नार लेक
मास्टर आस
वाल्लू सत्यम
मास्टर आस
आइथे यजमान डिगड
यू ब्राउन ओन्ली वन पार्टी
No one lord. No one lord. All these people, they say sir, master, master, master. Chodan de, vilantaka kola yezamana, yezamana annaro. But she said lord. Aite aami prabhuwa, praise the lord. Can you see the things? Chodan de, mir chodakalutunara. There is a lots of difference between master and the lord. Chodan de, prabhuwa ane danikini, yezamana ne daniki, chaala bettiasa mundi. For us. Manaku. He is our lord. Aaya manapravuva yunnadu. For another people, he is a master. Migita valikaite yezamana yunnadu. But for us, he is our lord. Manakite aina pravuva yunnadu. Oh lord of my life. Oh aaya manapravuva yunnadu. So, this scribes and Pharisees, they rejected that stone. Chisara, iyyoka parisayalu, sadukailu, ayyaka raiini trunikarincharu. It was a very great stumbling. Chodan de, thibari kichala odduga undi. Hey, according to the bible, she must die with a stoning and must go to hell. Chodan de, dharmasastra prakaranaga, vakyaprakaranaga, raala to kottabadi, aami champabadi, pataala niku pavaali. And it is, I am washing and washing and washing. Oh, enentos, ennosamatralkanenu kadukkuntu, kadukkuntu, naa subraborjukuntanu. And she is a sinner. Aamaite papi. Immediately, he said, okay, no sin. And this headstone, headstone says, no sin, go. Ah, chodan de, a talaray jepthundi, pappamal edu velu ante chepthunadaina. What do you think? Miriam, miriam talastunaru. If in this way, me giri. Iyame giri lo. Somebody murdered someone, somebody murdered someone. Yavaro, vakani, hati chesinupudu. And all the people, they went to the court. An pradhalandara koda ayyaka, a court kaveli. Oh sir, he must, he must be hanged to death. Oh, itra kachitenga uruthiyabadi champabadali. Because these are the proofs. Indika, idigo, iyyaka rizul onnai. He killed. Itra champadu. There are all these proofs. Idigo, ivannimadigirizul onnai. And that fellow now waiting for the death. Ayyaka vikti, ammaranamu koru kithru chustavuntharu. And the judge says. Ayyaka judge jepthadu. He looks to them. Avanandana chusi. That really he murdered. Oh, nisengane, itra hati chesada. A judge says, okay, I give my judgment. Aite judge jepthadu, naa ayyaka tirpunisthananu. Go free. Oh, ni, ni vidhalalapunda velipo. And he comes over here. Adar ochindanavata. And he says, hallelujah. Adar, hallelujah. Oh, I, I want to give my testimony. Apdva, ayyaka judge, vidhalajesinavikti. I was supposed to be hanged. Oh, nisengane, uruthiyabadi champabadali. They brought all the witnesses. Valandhara namidtho sakshal diskocharu. But the judge says. Aite judge jepthadu. You are free go. Ni, vidhalachepadavu, velu. I think that, church will say. Aite churchen jepthadi, sangen jepthadi. Judge did the wrong thing. Judgegar chaala topu chesada, sangon jepthadi. This is not right. Idi, tha, idi correct kaadu. He killed. Adar narhachi chesada. All there is a proof. Oh, ma, chaala rizul onnai. He was supposed to die. Itra kachitenga chenipavali, maranachali. We are a holy people. Miram parishudalau. We know that he should die. Oh, adar kachitenga chenip, champabadana magathelsu. But that judge did something wrong. Oh, ayyaka, a nyayavadilaka. He said, I don't condemn you, go. Ah, adaru, ni, vidhalajesana, velipo manjepthunadu. What do you think about it? Danigurichim miriam talastaru. Surely, many will be offended. Chaala mandi danigurichu, abhyantara padataru. Many will be offended. Chaala mandi abhyantara padataru. Brother sister, if god would have been, come according to the law, yeah, nobody would have been here, this everything. Iyeroj nisengane, prabhuva, yesu christu dharmasastra prakaranaga uste, ikkade avoro prathikunde avakashunle. I would have not been standing over here. Asal, ni, ikkane lebadaunde avakashumanakale. Then how I am standing? Ni, ela lebadaundanu. I have so many mistakes and so many sins. Ni, chaala goremana topulu, laka porapadlu chesana. We just have seen his death and go to hell. Pappamal, valna vachu jetham maranamu. But he said. Aaya chepthunadu. Go. Yes. You are free forgiven. Velu, ni vidhalachepadavu. Oh, it is very simple. Idi chaala samanyamanu visho. To go to heaven. Paralokanikivellutu mane. Brother sister, it is very difficult for these people. Chodan de, i parishudaluku chaala kastamanu karimega. They will tell you. Val cheptharu. You must know this thing, you must, you must be baptized. Ni, vidithelskavali, ni, baptism bandali. Yeah, when you get a time, you must get baptized. Yes, samayam ochinupu kachitenga baptism bandali. You must be a holy people. Mir kachitenga parishudalaga undal. Because that heaven is for the holy people. Indikante, paralokama, parishudaluka. If you will not be holy, you will go to hell. Mir parishudaluka undagapode, narhakanikavodha. Now, you must stop all these wrong things. Mir, venni kachitenga itopulu karialani, mir aapiyali. And if you don't know the seven seals. Mir, eedamudal teriak, thelskavode. You don't know the third pool. Mir, muda veyipu theliakapode. There, there is no rapture for you. Mi, asal, yattabadaleedu. Praise the lord. This is the message going on, if you don't understand this mystery, you will go in a hell. Kanika, iyya, iyyavartamanu vedatavu, i sangadu merdhanu cheskavode, mir narhakanikavodharu. If you want to go to heaven, come to our church. Oh, mir paralokanikavellanu, ma sanganikarundi. This is the message going on. Iyavartamanu me, lokumalavetavu. But I don't want to go to the holy group. Aite, ni, alati parishudalukumpulu, ikkavellanu kottale. I want to go to the lord. Praise the lord, ni, prabhuva, yadakavellanu kaurukuntanu. That holy group will show the C O D in quotation. Chodan, a parishudalene chupistaranu, lakanaalu, lakpadu, C O D. And he will say that, oh, you want to just go to heaven rapture, you must know the deep, deep, deep. Kanika, mir paralokanikavellanu, yattabadalu, lothena sangadu, lothena sangadu, mir thelskavali. Even Noah was having the three pools. Chodan de, noohu, mari, mudu, veyipu gurichathanu. Brother brothers say, the ark was the third pool. Asal, a vaade muda veyipayonde. It is a message called standing in the gap and the souls that are now in prison. Ah, ippracharalu, naatmalu, ane vartamanu lo, no, kaali lo nilichana, vartamanu, prompt chepthunadu. No, has ark was the third pool. Noohu, vaade, muda veyipayonde. Now, you, what the, what you will do to just go in a, in a ark and go to another world to be saved? Ni, vaadalu, ikkaveli, ayyaka, vere prapancham, nothana prapancham, ikkaveli, rakshinsabadali, eed chayali. Here, the donkeys and dogs and cats and rats and everything is coming. Chodan de, ikkade, garadalu, kotalu, lakpadu, kaya, jantuuli, ivanniku koda, vaadalu, ikkostanai. I want to ask mister donkey. Ayyaka, mister donkey, naa nadagalu, garadu nadagalu. Prophet told that Noah's ark is a third pool. Chodan de, pravakta chepthunadu, a noohu, vaada, muda veyipani. Do you understand the third pool mystery? Oh, garadu, ni, muda veyipu parichare thelsa, ni, ko. He says, what is that? Garadu, yamantadu, enthat, em, en, chepthunanu, nikunadukthadi. No, you must know that one third pool mystery and all these mysteries. Ni, vathodu, muda veyipu, ayyaka, marmaali, ivanniku theliakapode. Otherwise, you cannot go. Oh, lakpadu, ni, veli avakashunleedu. He says, sir, I don't understand. Oh, nakas, eee, marthangka. But only I feel that I must go inside. Praise the lord, hallelujah, loapal edu, naanu, laavutundu, aikkadu, vedalali, adi matram, naaku thelsanjep. No, for going into another world. Ni, maroka prapancham, ikkavellalinte. What you have to do? Ni, eed chayali. He says, I don't do anything. Oh, ni, ene, emi chaelenu. Only believe and go inside. Kevalam, nembe loapal vedataninte, praise the lord. You need not to do anything, I did not to do anything, he did it all. Yeah, man, ni, veemi chayalsanu panleedu, ni, ene, emi chayalsanu panledu, gani, manandara kosu, aaya, samastum chesesada. If you want to do so many things. Ni, veemo, eva, chayalu kunte. On that one, god is not going to take you in a rapture. Ah, ah, ni, chesse karialanu bati, ni, yattabadalu vedatamu, ani, sajimay. You are chosen by grace. Ni, krupavallana, innika chebadu. You have been saved by grace. Krupadvara rakshinsabadu. Professor, rapture is by grace. Yattabadu koda krupadvaraane. That is the only, very simple. Oh, nisengha, chaala samanyamanu karimega. Last time I said, the thief on the cross. Chodan de, chaala salu jepthaavu, no, a silvulu, donga. Nah, his all record of the life is in a police station. Chodan de, a donga yoka, mattochamari, charitranta koda chustanu, porapadlu, topulu, hachalu. His completely life is in a doing the crime, murder, theft, rape and all the dirty things. Adar, jivithamanta, naramalu, an, an chaala goremanu karialto, tanat charitrantade. He was not a Pharisee, never carried the bible. A parisayalaga, a granthana, parishudagranthana, patkunipudu, velnuvaadu kaadu. On a Sabbath day, he is in a bar. Adar, visranthana, barlo untharu. Living in a, all kinds of dirty lives. Anni, bainkaramanu, ikkavijithana, jivistana. He was a murderer, he was a thief. Adar, hati chesewadu, donga tanalu chesetwanti. According to the C O D. Oh, nisengha, C O D prakaranaga. They declare in a court. A court lo, mari. Who is the worst one must die. Chisara, ayyaka, ayyaka, chedipayinatwanti, chedavadu, kachitenga, ah, indikante. There are so many sinners and cripples, but this is the worst one, these two of them. Chodan de, itra chaala chedavadu, kachitenga, itra, itra, maranachali. And they were hanging over there. Kapate, adar, ayyaka, a tirpuna bati, adar, lakadu, silvulu, velladu, chebadavu. All life gone into the sinning. Adar, jivithamanta, pappamalore, garchpoyindi. Murderer. Hati chesetwanti. How many girls he raped? A chaala mandu, poodjesada. How many theft he has, bank robber. Oh, bankal doskunatwanti. Vodga unnadu. Murderers. Oh, hatyalu. But where he was, according to the bible, he is supposed to die and go to hell. Sattaprakaranaga, dharmasastra prakaranaga, adar, champabadi, pataalanikupavali. Now, only five minutes are left in his life. Adar, nekachivithamalu, kevalam, aydu nimishal matrami onnai. Not a five years. Aydu samatralkaadu. Only five minutes are left. Kevalam, aydu nimishal, ene, mikilunnai. That was the last. Adhe chivari. To go to hell. Pataalanikupavu, adhe chivari, samayamadi. But he saw. Adar, chuchadu. That I did everything wrong in my life. Na jivithamalu, anni, porapadle chesana. But he, he did not do anything. Aite, a prabhuva, yesu christu matru, eee, porapadu cheledu. I am a sinner, murderer, thief. Ni, papi, ni, hati chesinuvani, chaala goremana, mar daurbaikuni. How to go to heaven? Paralokanikavella, gala galnu. Can the thief go to heaven? Chodan, dongodu, paralokanikavodha. Can the murderer go to heaven? Mari, hati chesetwanti. Can a sinner go to heaven? Papi, paralokanikavodha. He knew that. Adar, thelsu. I am not worthy. Adar, thelsu, ni, yokunka. I cannot go. Ni, vedalalenu, koda, adar thelsu. I cannot do good things, not a single one. Ee, chinnap, manchi koda, ne chayaladu, adar thelsu. While hanging on the cross. A silvulu, velladu, tunapudu. He looked to the headstone. Ah, talaray, vaypu chusada, adu. Praise the lord. Who was rejected by the scribes and Pharisees. Chisara, i parishudalu, laka sadukailu, vilandhara chata, trunikarinsabadana, a talaray, chusada. He said, Jesus. Oh, yesaya. Now, this is what century, but I know that you will come probably in two thousand twenty-three. Ah, ni, nisengane, mari, renduval, yereyamudlo, vastavu, nikthelsu. That way, me giri people also will go. Oh, me giri lo, vandhara koda, paralokamalataru, nikthelsu. Lord, when you will come. Prabhuva, nu, ochinapudu. Please remember me. Thichesinana, nyapunkjesko. Praise the lord. He said. Adar, chepthadu. So many years. Chaala samatralkalu. One century, two century, three centuries. Madhuri setapdumu, rendu setapdumu. You do one thing. Ni, odchi. Today, you come with me in a paradise. Hallelujah, iyeroj, nu, naato, koda, paradeskara. You know that Jesus Christ took him in a paradise and after three days, he went to heaven. Praise the lord, chodan, yesu prabhuvaru, adar, paradeshku thiske vedatana, muddinala, taravata. Now, what you will go to heaven, what you will do to go to heaven? Chodan, paralokanikavelli, enchaastadu. Now, I will wash my burden on these pots. Chodan de. I will wash my pots. Ah, naa ayyaka, ah, patalunu sudhi chesana. I will keep washing my clothes. Na, ayyaka, vastralu, subraborjukuntanu. Because I touch this one, I touch that one, so I will wash myself. Adi murigyaundu, idi murigyaundu, chedlu kadukuntu, lak, subrung cheskuntanu. I go to he, I go to church, I go give my tithe and offering and I do pray two times in a day and fasting for this one and I don't do this. Yes, ni, churchikavatano, bu, puasamuntano, dashimbagalistanu. Because we are holy people, reading the bible, okay, keep reading. Chodan, mir parishudalamo, mir bible chavutunamo, mir kanukalistam, saray, manchide, avannimanchive. You keep reading. Mir alage chadutavu, unthandi. Tip is gone. Aite, mir ala chadutavu, unthandi, dongodu, madhara, paralokanikavodha. He is gone. Adar, velipo. What he did? Enchesada, adu. He did all wrong things. Anni, topulijesada. Then, when he went to the paradise. Adar, paradeshki vedanapudu. As every time I explain to you. Mir, pratisar, me giri chepthavunthani. Jesus said, today you shall be with me in paradise. A yesu prabhu, jepthun, neede, ni, naato, koda, paradeshlo. That time, the paradise in a lower part. Paradeshene, achi, kindibagam. Jesus died and he gave his ghost and his body was buried in the tomb. Chodan, yesu prabhuvaru, chenipayinapudu, ayni, sharamu, mari, samadalu, pettabadindi. And by theophany, he went to the lower part, to the prison house. Chodan de, ayyaka, theophanyene, ayyaka, sharamudo, dwara, aaya, kindibagamalo, ikkaveli. Body is in a doom. Ayni, sharamu, samadalu, undi. But theophany is in the, in the, uh, lower part, in the prison. Ayyaka, charalu, ikki, charalu, naatmalu, edugu, theophani, velindi. And then he entered into the prison. Aaya, a charalu, ikki, praveshinchina, apudu. My Adam saw that one. Adam, ayni, chusada. Hey, he is come. Oh, aynu, chadu. He told me that I will give you your son. Oh, nisengane, ikkani, kumandistani, ah. And, and this Joseph said, oh, he is come, can you see, I was telling you that he will come, he told me to take my bones, don't keep it here, I will visit you. Joseph chusada, ayni, chusidigo, okrozo, vimmoz, koda, vastadu, na, andike, na, emikil, thiski, lakadu, mir pathipad, ne chep, aaya, ene, chepthunadu. Job said, do you remember, I was telling you? Ah, Job chepthunadu, ni, chep, ani, chep, ni, guruthunadu. When I was dying on a, I am sitting on a hippo ashes. Ni, ento, bainkarmana, a shramalovunthapudu. I saw in a vision that he is come and he is raising me in my body. Oh, nisengane, aaya, raavatamu, ayni, drinana, lapatamu, chuchina sangadu, me gipchepanika. Everybody, they were shouting and it was a jubilee. Oh, nisengane, ayyaka, a pa, mara, acharalu, naava, antaka, anto, hananistu, devanima, hima, paristavu, naakala. Because he is come, he is come, he is come. Indikante, aynu, chadu, ganuka, aynu, chadu, ganuka. And behind? Vanakala? Yes, so who is behind him? Iy, ayn, vanakala, avaro. Hey, who is this one? Yavari, vikti. Hey, that is a thief. Oh, adar, donga. How he can come here? Iy, dongodu, ela, chesada, ikkadi. He is a thief, he is a murderer. Adar, hati chesinuvadu, dongodu, vadu. Hey, how you came? Oh, ni, ela, chesava, ikkadi. You are supposed to be here in a hell. Asal, nu, kachin, nu, nisengha, pataalanikupavali. All your record, the by police station says, all bad record. Ni, jivithu, ni, rekadantaka, anta, ni, topulij, porapadle. He said, yes, sir. Avunu, avunu, avunu. All my record is bad. Na, ayyaka, charitrantad. Then, then how you came in a paradise? Ayyaka, paradeshku, ela, vachao. He says, I didn't come. Ni, ralaidu. He brought me. Aaya, nan, thiskochadu, hallelujah. So what you will do, prophet says, what you will do? Oh, nisengha. To go to rapture. Pravakta, yattabadalu vedalalinte, enchayali. Brother, what, what he will do? Ayanenchaastadu. What I will do? Ni, enenchayali. I believe. Ni, namuthunanu. The greatest message, prophet brought the message of grace. Chodan de, goppavartamanu, pravaktamanu, thiskochadu, krupa vartamanam. You know that to be saved. Chodan de, manam rakshinsabadali. You have to attend the class. Manam, ayyaka, classikattindavali. You have to realize, you are a sinner, a sinner, a sinner. A taragatul, gattindai, man, pappulu, bani, laka. After, after, you have to attend the meeting for six months. Arnelu, ni, akkada, taragatul, gattindai. Pastor, can I take, no, 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 still, you be right. Arnelu, taravata, pastorgaru, nik baptismkaval, bapti thiskochadu. Continue coming to the church, we will see that one little. Pradhanu, kostavu, taravat, chodam, man, cheptharu. Time is going on, time is going on. Samayam, kam, garchpavu, unthadi, garchpavu. You have to do now, you have to get ready. Ni, kachitenga, sitapadala. Without that, you cannot go in a rapture or heaven. Ni, paralokanikilaka, yattabadalu vedalalinte. Jesus never asked this thing. Chodan de, yesu prabhuvaru, ippudu, koda, donganu, ivi, ilati, karialu, guricham, matlaladaina. Have you taken baptism? Ni, baptism thiskunavu? He said, no. Leedu. Have you given tithe? Oh, nu, dashimbagamichavu? Said, no, sir. Leeds, sir. Have you attended the church? Ni, sanganik, hadariyavu? He said, no. Oh, ledaya. You have done any good thing? Ni, eva, manchi karialijesava? No, sir. Leedu, ya. Jesus never asked a single question. Chodan de, yesu, ee, chinnaprashna, koda, adar, nadagaleedu. He said, today you shall be with me in paradise. Neede, ni, naato, koda, paradeshlo, unthava, ne chepthadu. When the woman was brought forth. Chodan de, a vashtri, aaya, mudugutiskunavabadnapudu. Ah, all these people, those went back. Chodan de, a vechina, pradhalandara, koda, amin, akkada, vedichpetti, velipo. But Jesus never asked her any, any single question. Yesu christu, ayni, amini, chinnaprashna, nadagaleedu. You tell me, woman, how long it is going on? Oh, oh, o, o, stree, entakala, ni, velaati, pannujesathunavu, chepu, nadagale. And who is that one? Asal, yavara, vikti. What is his name? Adar, parenti. That time, where was your husband? Ah, ni. Bada. Where was your husband? Ah, ni, badda eda, asalu, ah. Jesus never asked a single question. Ee, chinnaprashna, koda, amin, nadagale. He knows everything. Aaya, annee, thelsayani. Only believe. Kevalam, namam. Hair gets shaved. Oh, rakshinsabadu. Brother sister, with your efforts and my efforts. Mi, yoka, adikhatalu, naa, ayyaka, adikhatalu. You will never obtain the holiness. Enta, matram, vallana, parishudaluka, cheyavu. But just, we have to, as it is, we have to accept the lord. Kevalamu, mari, devaneka, vakyani, purthiga, manu, unnadu, unnatiga, manu, angikarinsa. That is the reason prophet was sent to that place. Andukoruke, pravakta, aaya, ayyaka, astalani, bumpinsabadadu. Where he was just come. Aaya, ochinapudu. He was changed person. Aaya, ayna, purthiga, marpuchendu, vikti, vachadu. He became like Christ. Aaya, christu, vanti, vikti, gamaradu. Standing in the gap. Aaya, kaali lo, nilabadadu. Brother brother, tells. Pravakta, pranhamgar, chepthunadu. What happened in nineteen sixty-three? Ayyaka, pantavu, aravayamudlo, enjerigindi. Oh, the cloud appeared. A megamu, digavachindi. And here comes Moses and Elijah. Akkada, moshe, eliyalu, charu. And Jesus was transfigured. Yesu, ropanthramachendadu, akkada. What is that one? A, enthadi. That is the final message. Adi, chivari vartamanam. Final message. Chivari vartamanam. Whether that, that is the grace and mercy. That is only mercy.
In, in Matthew seventeen.
In Matthew seventeen.
We read that thing, something happened.
Ah, ah, the vision, I'm going to see it in Matthew seventeen.
But that incident was not fulfilled in those days.
See, ah, the work, ah, that didn't happen.
It was fulfilled in nineteen sixty-three.
Ah, in the middle of the night, in Matthew seventeen, it didn't happen.
Because in a series, while, ah, brother, brother, he's preaching the revelation series.
Kalaj of the world.
Yeah, 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 I think part of the alien alive.
But God will give you the message, I will come and blast the churches.
Now, the devil, what am I missing up to watch this song, I'm not gonna just stand there, you know.
That is our prophet.
I didn't want to provoke to a couple.
Angry prophet.
Oh, I'm not going to do that, you know, a couple.
Bringing the judgment.
President, maybe they're not here for this question.
You cannot fool with him, cannot fool with him.
Sure, Andy, I.
But cannot make fun of.
Ah, sure, Andy, I need to handle it, ah, Mary, let me, I need to be able to stop it, you know.
Prophecy is God's justice.
Sure, Andy, probably, they're only a kind of a man.
To condemn you.
While we're getting this star.
Brother, brother, condemn that boy.
Just so that the prophet, I, a, my, a victim, get this out.
Condemn and kill you.
While they get this star, chomp it out, too.
Whatever you're doing.
Mirroring, mirroring, but.
That's right.
That is, you know.
How many mistakes we do.
Sure, Andy, any topless man, yes, I know.
How many times we bring that belief on the message.
My, any sorrow, man, we're a, what am I, we should, man, I'm a, we're there, you know.
How many times we do like that thief on the cross.
I, Donga, well, any sorrow, man, I'm topless, I know.
How many times we live like that woman which was going to be stolen.
Oh, I, Rana, to cut them, it went to three, well, any sorrow, and then I'm, you know, you know.
How many times we are just like a woman on the whale.
I, a, Bavi, the, 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 well, any sorrow, man, I'm, you know, you know.
How many times we are like a zacchaeus doing the fraud, our business.
निर्धुरे नाडप सिया सोधरी सोहदलार
Where you come?
आयन निवेप्पड़े तो वस्तावो
And tell him that I'm tired.
ओ नुच्चे पुणे नालिसिपैयानो
I'm tired, I'm tired.
निन नालिसिपैयानो, नालिसिपैयानो
I know that I'm not very good.
ओ निन अंत मात्रम नुमन्चि वाण्डे, मंचिदार काद
I wanted to be good, but I cannot.
निन मंचिगा उन्नल नुकुणार गानी, मंचिगा उन्नल एकपोतनानो
Lord, I come.
निन निकु, निन अद्दुगोच्यानो
He will say, "I forgive you."
ओ आयन निन परक्षमिस्तदा आयन
My sin of all.
ओ इन कन्नटिकी पापुच्ये दु
God is so gracious.
निसंगाने देवणांतो कृपकलवाड़े योनाड
Rapture is not difficult.
यत्थबोट नेदी, कमर कस्तमन कारीम लेखपोते
The sky then forces they will put so much burden on you.
चोडण्डी आयका सास्त्रलु परिशेल अन्नबढतुनवार, मीमेद चाला बाहरम मोपतुनार
You want to go to hell, you have to carry this one, that one, that one.
नु परलोकारी गवल्लण्डे, इदमोयल, अदमोयल नियो, बरुल मोपतुनार
But Jesus took all that burden.
आइते यसैया बरुवांता तिसिवेसी
From that thip, and threw it in the forgetful sea.
ओ मरपने समुत्रलो तिस माने तेत्रोसिवेसी
And he says, "Come."
ओ नु रा
I'm so happy.
ओ निसंगाने चाला संतोषिंगावन
That thip is Stephen's name.
ओ आयका दंगने Stephen's name
That woman on the well is Stephen's name.
ओ आयका भावितकुणाट्व ने Stephen's name
That is not my story, it is a story of loving Christ.
प्रेस लॉर्ड, आदि नाकथकाद गानी, आदि आयका, आयका, आयका प्रभु एक कथायोन्दे
He is so gracious and loving.
ओ निसंगाने नंतो कृपकलवाड़ेगा, प्रेमिच्ये वाड़ेगा योनाड
Do you love that capstone?
नी मीर आयकम तलराईनी प्रेमिस्तुनारा
It is a free grace.
आदि निसंगाने उजितंगे ओबरतुन कृपा
He said, "Don't pay anything, I paid it all."
ओ निवेमी, वेलचलिंचकलदु, निन अंत चलिंचेसन
Blessed be the name of the Lord.
देव नाम मुर्गे महिमा कालुगुनुगाक
Say hallelujah, thank you Jesus.
अंदर देवनिकिस्तोत्र जेपि देवन मेहपरुदाम
For forgiving all my sins.
ओ निसंगाने आयका पापुमलनिक्षमिच्या नाड
He taken all our sins.
आयन मरंदर पापुमलन तिसकुने
He was wounded for our grey, our sins.
मरंदर पापुमलन वित्तमाने कोटबट्डाडु, गायपर्चबट्डाडु
He died and he suffered.
आयन मरणिंच्याडु, मरनकोरकु व्यादर, मर अंत बाधरुन्दाडु आयन
One day, one man
वकर, वकरोज वक्मनिषी
Went to the some place.
वक्म स्थलानिक वेल्लाड
And then in the village
वक्म ग्रामानिकी
Mountain area.
वक्म कुंडप्रांतमु
And he saw one of the old ladies sitting.
अकड़ वक्म मुसली, स्त्रीन कुचोड़ जूचेडु
In the hut.
आयका गुडिसेलो
And this man went, the preacher went over there.
योक प्रसंगीकुड़ा अकड़ी वेल्ली
He said, "Ma"
आ, अम्म
"What happened? That boy is coughing."
आयका, मरी, आयका बालुड़ियका, मरी इंटर समाधिपेटे
He is very sick. That boy is very sick.
आयका, आयका पिलवाडु, चाला रोगीगा योनाड अकड़
Just sleeping on a grass.
आदर गेट्टीमेद पड़े योनाड
Grass bed.
आयका, गेट्टी परुपमेद पड़े योनाड
She said, "Yes, he is very sick, he is one year."
ओ वक्म समुत्रमुण्डे आदर व्यादितो बाधपडतुनाडु
And then he was coughing and coughing and almost
दुगुतुनाडु, चाला
In a dying condition.
आदर मरणावस्थलो योनाड
He was breathless.
आदर ऊपरीकोड़ा पिलचकुलेन्न परिस्थितो योनाड
The preacher wanted to know how he got that sickness.
आइते आयका प्रसंगीकडु तेलस्कोलुकुणाडु, इंदुकु आर रोगमात्रन गोचिंदी
That was a cold country.
आदि चाला चली, प्रदेशमदी
All snow was falling.
आयका मंच कुरुस्तावन्दी
That this preacher wanted to know
आयका प्रसंगीकडु तेलस्कोलुकुणाडु
He went close.
आदर दग्गरकी वेल्ली
He said, "Son, what happened to you? How you got was sick?"
आयका कुमारुदारकी वेल्ली, निक एन जरिगिंदे, इंदुकोचिंदे निक व्यादि
He said, "My father was having, looking, I was looking after the sheep."
आ
I was looking for the sheep.
आ निनो, गुरिल्नी मेवपतुनानो
And with the, I brought the flock in a home.
निन आयका गुरिल्नी इंटिकी तिसकोचिन बुड
Father saw that one sheep is missing.
नातन्री वक्म गुरिरे तपिपोड़ण जूचेडु
And it was a very severe cold.
कनका आदि चाला, विपरेतमन चली
But father said
आइते तन्र जेपड
"Son, one, one sheep is missing."
वक्म गुरिरे तपिपोइंदी, कुमारुडा
"Will you go and find that sheep?"
निवेल्ली आयका गुरिने वेदिकी तिसकुन वस्ताव
He said, "In the night time."
आ रात्रिसामयलु जपतुनाडु
Everywhere the dark and dark and dark.
एकड़बड़ तकड़ा चीकट, चीकट, चीकट
He was climbing on the mountain, I was climbing on the mountain, going in the valleys and looking.
आदर आयका परवदालेकुतु, लोयल दिगुतु अंत चूस्तावन्दे, विदुतावन्दे
All night, it was snowing.
आ रात्र अंत मंच कुरुस्तावन्दी
It was severe cold.
चाला विपरेतमन चली
But finally I found that lamb.
आइते चिवरीकी आ गुरिने नु कुनुकुनानो
I brought that lamb home.
निन गुरिने इंटिकी तिसकोच्यानो
And because of the severe cold
आयका विपरेतमन ट्वेल्ड चलिन बट्टी
I got this cold.
नाकी वक्म दुग्गोस्तावन्दी लेक
I got that sickness.
नाकी रोगम चिंदी
But I'm happy.
आइते निन संतोषिंगावन्द
I may die, but I brought the lamb.
प्रेस लॉर्ड, निन चेन्न पोतना, गुरिपिलन तिसकुरागेलगेन, अंदुकु निन संतोषिंगाव
He died for you.
हॅलेलुया, आयन निकोरकु चेन्न पैयाडु
He came to save father's lamb.
चुसारा, आयन गुरिलकोरकु व्यादिगुरुस्तले इप्पे, व्यादिरानु पिविच्या वाड़े
While sicking, he was wounded. He was, while sicking, he was wounded.
या आयन निन वेदुतावन्दा पुण्डीकोरकु गायपर्चबट्डाडु
He died with a miserable death.
ओ चाला, तय नियमान्द ट्वेल्ड मरणाने नु पिविच्या डायन
But he brought you and me home.
आइते निन्नु नन्नु कुरहानिकी तिसकुन वच्चे
Blessed be the name of the Lord.
देव नामानिक महिमा कालुगुनुगाक
Give glory to the Lord Jesus.
देव नामानिक महिमा कालुगुनुगाक
Blessed be the name of the Lord.
देव नाम मुर्गे महिमा कालुगुनुगाक
It is only the message of grace.
ओ कैवलमु विदिकेद, कृपावर्तमानमयोन्द
May God bless all of you.
देवुड़ मीमलंदन दिविच्या गाक
I'm so happy.
निन चाला संतोषिस्तुनानो
But your pastor, my son, does give me the opportunity to spend some time with you.
मीतो कोणत सेपु कटबटानिकी मी पास्टरगर, नाक कुमारुडु, नाकी अवकाश मिच्या नंदुकु
I want to tell you, I love you all.
निनो मीकु चपतुनानो, मीमलंदन निन प्रेमिस्तुनानो
May God give you perfect health.
देवुड़ आयनिकी परिपूर्णमन आरोग्यमुन देवुडायच्या गाक
All you stand with him behind you.
ओ मी वेनकाय नेलबट्टानिकी
If he get discouraged, pray, support him.
आयन केविदमन ट्वेल्ड निर्चस्काकर, मर परिस्थितलु बलहिंदल वच्चीन आयन तो मेरोन्डे, आयनकी वेनक, मरी, आयनकी सहकारलगा मेरोन्डे
If you want to be blessed, pray for him, support him.
मीला आयनकोरकु प्राधर चेंडे, आयनकी सहकारलगा मेरोन्डे
And God bless all of you.
देवुड़ मीमलंदन दिविच्या गाक प्रेस लॉर्ड, हॅलेलुया महिमा कालुगुनुगाक हॅलेलुया, चक्कड़े वर्तमानम विन्नाम चाला प्रामुख्यमयन वर्तमानमु मरी, तलराईनु गुरिंची, लेक, कॅपस्टोनु गुरिंची, चाला चक्कचक्कड़े गोपोगोपो विष्यालु चेपेटमंड वालु योनारु, अंते एन्टो अनिजनालक कोड़ अर्धंकाकुण्डक जेसे परिस्थितलो निसंगाने कॅपस्टोनु लेक, हेडस्टोनु अंते, लेक, तलराई अंते एन्टी अनेदी अंतो सामान्यतलो, अंतो सिंपलगा, दानायन मुर्गे चूपिंचार ईरोजना देवुड़की महिमा कालुगुनुगाक हॅलेलुया, प्रिलारा, मरी तप्पनसरिका मनक्रियल कादु, मनयक पणलु कादु आणि एन जेस्याडो, दानीन बट्टे मन यवरमयना, आयन मलक्षमिंचाडु, आयन कृपचूपड़ मरबट्ला मरी, आयका कॅपस्टोन मिनिस्ट्री अंते, लेक, कॅपस्टोन रिवोलेशन अंते, कृपु मनकर आवडमे परिस्थितलगा योनाडली, परिस्थितलगा जिविंसालनी, आशपडे वारीकादी ओकड्डु, बंडगावन्टुंदी आदा ओकड्डु बंडगावन्दी, वारीक अर्धंकाकुण्ड दु, परिस्थितंगा लेकुंडा, पवित्रंगा लेकुंडा मरी यलागलतम मन परलोकराजी वेल्लेंगदा, अर्कुणरणी, यवरकी वाल्ले पवित्रंगा, परिस्थितंगा उंडी परलोकमलालो मात्रो असाद्यम, आणि एन जेस्याडो दानी नमी, आ कृपनु पुंदुकुन्नवालो मात्रमे वेलतार देवनिस्तोत्रम, बायबिललो चाला रकल तप्पलुन्नट्टु कन्पिच्ची, भुतुलुन्ट्टु कन्पिच्चीन आदि अप्पड़की परिस्थित ग्रंधमे, इंदुकु अंते, आदि परिस्थितूड़ैन देवुनिकुरिंची रायपनक ग्रंध आयन परिस्थितूड़ीका बट्टर, अप्पड़की परिस्थितमयनदे करिक चक्कड़े विष्यालु मन विन्नाव, मरी एकड़एकड़ा पापुमंदे पतिचोट अकृपवन्दी आदामु चेसिन अपापानिकी वेंटन्ने कृपु जूपिंचाडु देवुड़ अकड़ा अलाकी कड़ा चाला चक्कड़ी, मरी उदाहानल जूपिंचारु काबट प्रिलारा, मरा एका, विविचारमंदे पट्टबन्ना स्त्रीनी, एसप्रोब तिसकोचिन बुड यवरायना, आयने तलराई देवनिस्तोत्रम, यसै तलराईयाय योनाड तलराई देव तिसकोचिन बुड एवनाड आयन अम्म वालंदर येरी लेयर यवर निक्सक्षय विदिंसलेदा, विदिंसलेदु, निनकोड़ सक्षय विदिंसनो एकनो नु पापमु, चय्यदु अनिजेप्पड देवनिस्तोत्रम कलुनुगाक करिक एसप्रोब अप्पड़की कुड़ा, पापुलकी स्नेहतुन अंते पापुलकी स्नेहतुन अंतकरिका, अप्पड़की मन परिस्थितलगे इंकुंडकोड पापल जेस्तावन्तने, आयन मनक स्नेहतुरिका उन्टनने दान भावम कादु, देवुनिकिस्तोत्रम कलुनुगाक पापुलनुक्षमिंचाड आयन पापुलकोसु वच्चाड आयन, देवनिस्तोत्रम हॅलेलुया, यवर अकृपयंदु विस्वासमुंचारो, यवर अप्रयमयंदु विस्वासमुंचारो यवर दानी पुंदुकुन्नारो, वालंदर कुड़ा, तप्पकर रक्षिंचबडतार प्रिलार नंतुनानो, फाइनलगा, मीरु, मी योक्का, इबिलिटी, लेक, मी गोप्पतनो, मी मंचितनो मी परिस्थितता, दानीपै, आदारपडी, परलोक वेलदावनी यन्नडु मीरु, प्रयत्निंचवोद्दु अला उन्डाल नुकुन्ना, ये वक्करु, परिपूर्णलुगा, परिस्थितलगा उन्डालेयर आयने मन परिस्थितलगा चयाली आयन कृपये मन परिस्थितलगा चयाली दानीन बट्टे मन वेलताम प्रिलार अंदुके यल्लपुड़ अन्चेसिन दानीबट्टी स्तुतिस्तो उन्डाली आयन एन जेस्याडो दानीबट्टी गणबरस्तो उन्डाली अंधे काकुण्ड दानीपूर्तिका नम्माली, अप्पडे मनमुकोड़ा परिस्थितलगा तेर्चबडताम परलोकमलालो उंडे दिकचितिंगा परिस्थितले, कानी यवरी परिस्थितलु भूमिपै दंगालु दोचकुन्नवारु, तप्पल यस्नोलु, त्रागबोतलु, इलंदर भूम्यदा, इलांटोलु कानी आयन कृपनु पुंदुकुने, वारे परिस्थितलगा उन्डाबोतावनार गॉड ब्लेस यो देवुड़, मल दिविच्या गाक अंदर लेचिन्नल बट्टी देवुन सुदिंचकुंदा मीकु बोबनन देवुन कृपनु बट्टी देवुन सुदिस्तार मीके बोबनन देवुन कृपा तलराई अरवेमूरलो जरिगिन अकारीमदे तलराई यवन्ने ताकिते तलराई नवरकलस्कुंडे वालीकचितिंगा प्रयमगा मारिपोतारु प्रोक्त प्रयमगा मारिपैयाडु प्रोक्त प्रयमगा मारिपैयाडु, करिक अप्पी असोदलार कप्पकमीर गमनिंचंडी इंदुकु मारिपैयाडंडे, आदे तलराई वर्तमानम दाने मन तलराई वर्तमानमाटुनाम यंत अद्भुतमन विष्यम मीर गमनिंचंड प्रिलार आदे तलराई वर्तमानम ई तलराई वर्तमानमे कृपययोनदी, प्रयमययोनदी करिक तप्पनसरिका मीर अंदरु, आयका, विष्यानिक गहिंसनवारे ई कालमदी, इंको विष्य जपतुना This is the last message. तलराई वर्तमानमे, चोडण्डी, कड़वरी वर्तमानम प्रोक्त वर्तमानम, चिवरी वर्तमानम अनिजेप्पट्ला वर्तमानमुलो चिवरी वर्तमानम ईयोका प्रोक्तयोका, वर्तमानमुलो चिवरी वर्तमानमे तलराई तलराईनी कलस्कोडमे, देवनिस्तोत्रम एसप्रोबयोका चिवरिदिनालो, आयने कलस्कु, आयने कलस्कुंदा मैगम मरी, प्रोक्तयोका चिवरिदिनालो, आयने कलस्कुंदया मैगम एप्पडैता मैगमु अन्नबड़ा तलराई एप्पडैते तलराई यवरका दुकृष्टे एप्पडैतला कलस्कुनाडु, वाल प्रयमगा मारिपैयर प्रिलार वाललो चेंज वच्चे काबट ईरोज कुड़ा निन मीक जप्पे दोकटे मन वेन्नी गंतुल चिंदुलेसिन, आ तलराईनी कलस्कुने दाक प्रयमगा मन मारलेमो, प्रयमगा मारिते गानी महिमलोकी वेल्लेलेंगनुका, प्रयमगा मारलनुकोरुकुण्डनाम इद्वेषालु, कक्षालु, पगलु, ईर्षालु ओ जेसिन जरिगिन विष्यालु, जरिगिपैन संगतलु मरिचपौलेनी परिस्थिती यन्नी मन जीवतलो भुगावन्नाई प्रिलार यन्नी पोई प्रयममल्लो रावलंते, कचितिंगा तलराई मन कलस्कवाली आदे तलराई वर्तमानमयनदी प्रिलार यंचदिनालो योका, कड़वरी काल वर्तमानमुलो योका प्रोक्त वर्तमानमुलो चिवरी वर्तमानमिदे इदे चिवरी वर्तमानम, मनगा, तलराईनी कलस्कोडमे चिवरी वर्तमानमयनदी करिक प्रतिरोक्करु गमनिंचंडी, मीर यवरायना मी वेपुच्युस्कोद्दु परिस्थितंगा उन्डालेपोतनाननी, चिंदिंची, क्रिङ्गिपोद्दु गानी, मीरु आयन वेपुच्योडण्डी आ तलराई वेपुच्योडण्डी, अडुगुदाम ओ, यवरनैते तलराई ताकिंदो, वार मारियरगदा प्रभा कृपना कोड़े युम्मन अडुगुदाम अलांटी कृपना कुदायच्या नायन निकचितिंगा जपतुना, वधुवुनु तलराई कप्पे कालमिदे वधुवुनु तलराई कलस्कुने समयमिदे हॅलेलुया, देवनिस्तोत्रम कलुनुगाक कचितिंगा तलराई, वधुवु रिंडु, आयक्यपर्चबडे समयमिदी अला चेसिन अप्पडे कचितिंगा मल्लो, ओकड्भुत मारपोस्तदी इंत कालमु प्रयासपड़ते, जरगनी गोप्पा विष्यम क्षणालो नीलो जरगबोतावनदी देवनिस्तोत्रम कलुनुगाक अंदर जेदिले, तिरणिजेदिले ती कचितिंगा प्रभु आ तलराई अनुभुनकुदायचे आ तलराईनी कलस्कुने कृपु नागदायचे ओ राजा, नीवेनंड कलस्कवालना आयन नाकचितिंगा प्रभा मारपुकावाली आ कृपना कावाली प्रयमना कावाली, प्रभननु माचुनायन अनडुगुदाम ओ देवानिके स्तोत्रालु हॅलेलुया, नम्मनोल्क अड्डुबंडा नम्मनोल्केदि जीवम ईरोजो ओ नम्मन वालकेदि अड्डुबंडगावन्टुंदी कार्यालुद्वारा रक्षिंबुंदता मनकुने वालक अड्डुबंडिदी कानी कृपद्वारा रक्षिंचबडताम मनकुन्ना, मनकेदि गोप्पा देवुनी कृपा देवुनी शक्तिदी Glory to Lord, हॅलेलुया Glory my Jesus Wonderful Lord प्राधन चेदाम Mahima Glory to Lord, glory to Lord, glory to Lord
कृपा, कृपा, कृपा
Glory my Lord
नी कृपा
अंदर बाड़दाम
नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम नावंटी पापीनी प्रेमिंचेनो नावंटी नीजुनी रक्षिंचेनो
अंदर बाड़दाम
नावंटी पापी
हॅलेलुया
प्रेमिंचेनो नावंटी नीजुनी रक्षिंचेनो
अंदर बाड़दाम
कृपा, कृपा, कृपा कृपा, कृपा, कृपा नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम नाहुदयमुनकु भयमुनु नेपिनदी नाकलवरमुलन तोलगिंचिनदी कृपये नाहुदयमुनकु भयमुनु नेपिनदी नाकलवरमुलन तोलगिंचिनदी कृपये कृपा, कृपा, कृपा कृपा, कृपा नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा
ग्लोरी
यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा निसहायस्तितिलो बलपरचिनदी कृपये नेविस्वसिंचिन नाटिनुंडी कापाडिनदी निसहायस्तितिलो बलपरचिनदी कृपये
अंदर
कृपा, कृपा, कृपा
ग्लोरी
कृपा, कृपा, कृपा
हॅलेलुया
नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा
ओ लॉर्ड
यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम
वंडरफुल लॉर्ड
अद्भुतमयन कृपा
महिमा
यंतो मधुरमय परिपूर्ण एर पाटुकै पिलिचिनदी मुन्नतमयन परिचर्य नीचिनदी परिपूर्ण एर पाटुकै पिलिचिनदी मुन्नतमयन परिचर्य नीचिनदी कृपा, कृपा, कृपा
हॅलेलुया
कृपा, कृपा नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम पिचयोच्चवमुत्तो ऊरेगिंचिनदी कृपये पिचयोच्चवमुत्तो ऊरेगिंचिनदी
अंदर, कृपा
कृपा, कृपा, कृपा
अंदर बाड़दाम
कृपा, कृपा कृपा
ओ माय लॉर्ड
नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा नी कृपा यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम यंत अद्भुतमयन कृपा
हॅलेलुया
गर्सया यंतो मधुरमयन स्वरम नावंटी पापीनी प्रेमिंचेनो नावंटी नीजुनी रक्षिंचेनो नावंटी पापीनी प्रेमिंचेनो नावंटी नीजुनी रक्षिंचेनो कृपा, कृपा, कृपा कृपा, कृपा, कृपा कृपा, कृपा, कृपा कृपा, कृपा, कृपा नी कृपा, नी कृपा, नी कृपा
Glory to Lord मन मेमयन्नामो प्रिलारा, आदि देवुन कृपययोन्दे देवुन कृपवल्ला मन रक्षिंचबड्दाम मन नीत कार्यालु, मन गोप्प कार्यालु कादु मोत्तुक कड़वरी काल वर्तमानम अंता सरिगा आच्चितूची अंतार्धंजिस्कुंडे चिवरकु मिगले यदिरांटे आयन निकोरकु चेसिन गोप्प कारीमे आदे निन्नु नन्नु रक्षिस्तावन्दि तप्प अंतरमिंची रक्षिंचकलकेदी